Well, good morning and welcome to City Hall. We'll get started with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Pastor Joel Flogstedt of Our Lord's Lutheran Church is here to lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilwoman Meg Sawyer if she'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
The Lord be with you. Let us pray. Gracious God, Heavenly Father, we give you thanks and praise for this new day that you have set before us with all its opportunities to love and serve both you and our neighbor. We thank you for this city, and we pray that you will defend us against discord and disorder, and preserve for us a community of tranquility and opportunity. We ask your blessing on those who work to obtain these gifts for us, protect those whose work is dangerous, encourage those who work anonymously at desks, grant relief to those who work under the heat of the day. We remember Lord God, those officers who, going beyond the call of duty, have recently suffered serious injuries. We pray that in your power, you will continue to help them recover from their injuries. And now for those gathered here in this chamber who will make decisions on behalf of all of us, we pray, gracious God, that leaving self-interest aside and armed with wisdom and clarity, they may always resolve issues that come before them, seeking the common good and the well-being of all who live and work in this city. In Jesus' name, amen.
Then?
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, it is summertime, and our summer parks are opening up swimming pools throughout the city. Every year, we are constantly challenged with trying to see how many pools we can keep open, how many spray grounds are appropriate to entertain the youngsters in our community. And last year, Chesapeake Energy stepped up and adopted one of our pools, fully funding it, allowing us to open a pool that otherwise would not have been open. And they have graciously come back and decided to do it again this year. And so Theresa Rose is here representing Chesapeake. Theresa, you want to come on up and bring your big check? Oh, I never got to win a golf tournament with money, but this is as close as I get to feeling like I did. Theresa, thank you very much. As you can see, this keeps Macklinburg Park open, a $39,000 gift from Chesapeake Energy. Let's show our appreciation.
Mayor, I'll let you hold this for a minute. You can have the whole thing. There you go. It's hard to go through the drive-through with that, so you're going to have to walk in. But it truly is Chesapeake's honor to be able to support the city and keep Macklinburg Pool open. I was sharing with the mayor earlier that internally, we communicate a lot of our charitable giving stories throughout all of our employees. Last year, when we made this contribution, we received more comments about keeping this pool open and the service that we were providing to the children of this city than we did virtually any other contribution. So we were, as a whole community of Chesapeake employees, we are truly thrilled to be able to partner with the city for this project.
Thank you. Let's show our appreciation again to Chesapeake Energy and Theresa Rose for coming down. Today, we also are going to get to honor one of our great civic leaders, Stanton Young. Stanton, you want to come forward? This will not be a short presentation because we have to list some of Stanton's accomplishments, and it will be, I assure you, lengthy. We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled.
Well, Stanton L. Young was appointed to the Urban Renewal Authority on May 1st, 1979, serving as member and chairman until April 5th, 2011. Whereas Stanton L. Young, a native Oklahoman, born in McAllister on July 26th, 1927, graduated from the University of Oklahoma's College of Business with a Bachelor of Science degree in accounting and economics. Whereas Stanton L. Young is the CEO of the Youngs Company, which currently includes Journey House Travel Services in Oklahoma City, Tulsa, and Norman, Share &amp; Car Travel in Dallas, commercial real estate in three states, and oil and gas production in five states. Whereas Presidents Nixon, Ford, and Carter, as well as Oklahoma Governors Bartlet, Boran, Ny, and Bellman, placed great trust in Stanton L. Young's extensive knowledge and understanding of economic development and growth in communities, and appointed him to a number of national and state-level boards and committees. Whereas Stanton L. Young has dedicated his time and talents to numerous organizations and groups for the benefit of social services, citizen health and welfare, and community improvement. The shortlist includes the State Area Wide Health Planning Agency, Dean McGee Eye Institute and Foundation, Presbyterian Hospital Board and Health Foundation, St. Anthony Advisory Board, Oklahoma Christian University, Oklahoma City University, American Red Cross, Barbara and Stanton L. Young Foundation, Oklahoma Eye Institute Foundation, Children's Miracle Research Institute and Foundation, Oklahoma Health Center Foundation, Oklahoma City Community Foundation, United Presbyterian Church USA Foundation, Veterans Hospital Foundation, and Boy Scouts of America. Whereas it is impossible to enumerate an all-inclusive list of Stanton L. Young's service to our city, state, and nation, and although not motivated by want of prestige or gratitude, it is likewise impossible to count the much-deserved awards and honors he has received from these diverse organizations. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby commend and honor Stanton L. Young for the service, dedication, commitment, generosity, loyalty, and wisdom that he has provided to Oklahoma City.
Okay. Stanton, this is where the anxiety comes, because now the council's actually going to vote on whether or not we should honor you or not. So if you'll turn around, we'll look at the green, we'll look for green lights up there. We want green ones. All right, cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. Let's show our appreciation. We are fortunate to have a lot of civic leaders, and some are able to give their time and some are able to give their expertise, but for decades Stanton has given both. And Stanton, we are extremely grateful for all the service you've given on so many economic development issues through the years, and helped so many people find work and improve the economy and this world and this city especially is a better place because of your work and your commitment to this city. We appreciate it. You bet, you bet. Let's show our appreciation when we come. And next month Stanton will celebrate his 84th birthday. Congratulations on that, too. Ask Cindy Hayes to come up. As you may know, we have over 4,000 employees with the city of Oklahoma City. Every month, we select one in cooperation with the South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club to represent our employees as the employee of the month. Cindy has had an extraordinarily busy year. The Myriad Botanical Gardens, as you know, was resurrected, rebuilt, and it was her job to make sure that nothing died inside the Crystal Bridge while all the construction took place around it and all the mayhem. And we'll get an update on how successful Cindy was, but we have a resolution commending her on her commitment to the parks and recreation, and specifically the botanical gardens. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas Cindy Hayes has been a city employee for 24 and a half years and is a horticulture worker one in the Myriad Botanical Gardens of the Parks and Recreation Department. Whereas Cindy's knowledge of plant life has been invaluable during the recent construction and renovation at the Myriad Botanical Gardens. Cindy continued to water and care for the plants that remained inside the Crystal Bridge during the renovation process after most of the staff had been relocated to Will Rogers Park. Whereas Cindy Hayes crawled through scaffolding and construction debris to keep the plants healthy, continually dealt with a mess of sandblasting, not only the hazards to herself, but also having to remove the dust particles that accumulated on the plants. Whereas Cindy worked late and on weekends to care for the plants, working with grace and dignity in less-than-favorable conditions when the water and heat were turned off during the renovation. Whereas Cindy consistently performs her duties in an outstanding manner, shows interest, knowledge, and dedication beyond the scope of her job, is friendly, helpful, volunteers, and takes personal responsibility for doing a good job. Cindy is a loyal employee of the Parks and Recreation Department who believes the Myriad Botanical Gardens is the crown jewel of the city and is proud to be a part of keeping its beauty alive. Whereas the council desires to recognize Cindy Hayes for her dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the citizens of Oklahoma City.
I bet we can get a motion and a second on this one. What do you think, council? All right, cast your votes for Cindy. Pass unanimously. Let's show our appreciation for you. Just imagine for a moment that it was your job to make sure that the botanical gardens had something growing when we opened it. And through a year of dust and construction debris, I can't imagine how many anxious moments there were as you tried to keep some very special plants alive for us. The park itself is getting rave reviews, and certainly when people go into the botanical gardens, they're expecting there to be plants there regardless of the construction. So Cindy, we have you to thank among a lot of your coworkers. Thank you so much, congratulations. Let's show our appreciation one more time. I'll ask Bob Funk to come up and bring everybody that's here with you. Bob, we've got the coaching staff at the Blazers, we've got the front office here. Come on up. We had an outstanding first season of the Oklahoma City Barons, and we asked them to come down today so we could properly honor them and salute the team that not only played so well throughout the year, but played extremely courageously during the playoffs. And we're going to need to move over, aren't we? We've got a lot of people coming up. These are the most broad-shouldered coaches I think I have ever seen. We have a resolution. I'll have the clerk to read it as we get settled.
Whereas October 9th, 2010 ushered in a new era of hockey for Oklahoma City as the Oklahoma City Barons began their inaugural season in front of a crowd of nearly 10,000 at the newly renovated Cox Convention Center. Whereas from the opening puck drop in October through the final home playoff game in April, the Oklahoma City Barons were dedicated to improving the quality of life in Oklahoma City. Whereas as the primary developmental affiliate of the Edmonton Oilers, Oklahoma City is now the proving ground for the next era of great players who will skate for the Oilers. Whereas during the inaugural 2010-11 season, 12 players who started this season in Oklahoma City were called up to the big club, with players like Linus Omark, Jeff Petry, and Liam Redox, each playing more than 30 games with the Edmonton Oilers. Whereas in the team's first season, head coach Todd Nelson and his staff guided the Oklahoma City Barons to 40 wins and a berth in the Calder Cup playoffs against the Hamilton Bulldogs. Whereas the 2010-11 season unfolded, the Oklahoma City Barons built a foundation with their business and community partners, such as the Oklahoma City Youth Hockey Association and Special Olympics, and throughout the coming season will continue to build positive relationships with the citizens of Oklahoma City. Whereas Bob Funk Jr. and the staff of the Oklahoma City Barons number nearly 30, and in one season have already become an integral part of the downtown community. Whereas Oklahoma City is proud of the Oklahoma City Barons and prodigal hockey, and whereas both on and off the ice, everyone associated with the Oklahoma City Barons is a champion to the Oklahoma City community. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend the Oklahoma City Barons for a great first season, just the first of many years of great professional hockey in Oklahoma City.
How about a motion and a second? Cast your votes. How about that? Let's show our appreciation for the Barons. Congratulations, Bob. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to take a quick moment, obviously, to thank my staff. I work with some of the best people, you know, I believe, in Oklahoma City. Our season seat holders who have supported us, all of our fans, SMG, Gary DeJarden over at the building, and our corporate partners, Chesapeake being our founding partner, have been great supporters of the community. And most importantly, I'd like to thank the city council, Mayor Mick Cornet, Jim Couch, Tom Anderson with the city. Without your support and without the city's willingness to put in the renovations of the Cox Arena, this wouldn't be possible. I really feel like that the Barons is Oklahoma City's team. It's not, it's not just our team, it's everybody's team. Everybody's put forth such an effort to make us successful and to really help us build a successful franchise in Oklahoma City with a successful fan base, and it would not be possible without all of your efforts. So I really do appreciate you guys really are responsible for this, for everything that's happened in our success this year. Thank you so much.
Let's show our appreciation. Thank you, Bob. You bet. Thank you so much. We're on item, I guess, 3D through 3G, a series of appointments. We do need one amendment. On item G, Jeffrey Parks was called in your packet an attorney member, he should be called an architect member, so simply a title correction. But if I can have a motion to make that amendment in a second, and we'll vote on the amendment first, Francis? Okay, vote on the amendment first, cast your votes, that amendment is made. And now on the rest of the appointments, how about a motion? Cast your votes, and those pass unanimously, too. To go on to item four, this is Journal of Council Proceedings, and item 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings from May 31st and June 7th, and item 4B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings from May 10th, 17th, and 24th. All right, comments or questions on the journal? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item five is requests for uncontested continuances. Do we have any today?
Mayor, I have a few this morning, starting on page 25, under dilapidated items 8J1, item B, 2923 Southwest 9th Street. We ask that that be stricken. The owner has removed. And item H, 3525 Southwest 29th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has removed. And then moving to page 26, under item 8K1B, 3601 South Brunson, we'd ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. Item C, 1817 South Grand, we'd ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item K, 1840 Southwest 15th, we'd ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item N, 2921 Southwest 19th Street, we ask that that be stricken. We need to rework as a property maintenance item. Item P, 2932 Southwest 21st Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item S, 3240 Southwest 25th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And item T, 223 Southwest 26th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And then moving on to page 30, under claims from denial, under item 8V1H. 8V1H, Royal Auto, we'd ask that that be stricken. They provided us with additional information, and that will be brought back at some time in the future as a claim for approval.
All right. Any other requests for uncontested continuances? We'll assess the council meeting then, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are five items. All right, we have a motion and a second on the MFA. Comments or questions? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. There are six items. Comments or questions on the PPA? Absolutely. Come forward if you'd like. You'll need to come forward to the microphone, please. And we'll need your name and address for the record.
All right, Joshua Zambrano, and 800 California Avenue. And I was just going to mention about the job effectiveness of demolishing a structure as opposed to, as opposed to just renovating it.
I'm sorry, which item on the PPA are you referring to?
I'm referring to, I believe this is eight, page 24...
Yeah, we're not that far yet. I must have misspoken.
Regarding to 24 and 25, you're about the dilapidated...
Okay, hold on, let me look and see where it'll be appropriate for you to come back up.
He's under dilapidated items.
Okay. Joshua, you signed up for item 8H1 and 2. Well, I'll make sure you come back up at that point. We're ready to vote on the PPA? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Adjourn OC PPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. We have one item. Okay, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on the EAT. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Adjourn OC EAT, reconvene the council meeting with a consent docket. All right, are there any individual considerations?
We do have a replacement resolution on item, which item is it, Francis?
6BG.
6BG. It got flipped with a resolution that's on another item, and so the cover memo is correct. We just had attached the wrong resolution to it.
Okay, do we need an amendment on that, Francis? Okay, we do not. So it'll just be part of the consent docket. Meg, you wanted to talk on that?
Just if I could briefly mention inclusively item 6BA through BD.
BA and D, BD. All right, anybody else? Okay, Meg, you want to jump in?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I just wanted to mention that these four items, and I need to find them quickly. Sorry about that. Got to me too fast. These are all acceptance of contributions from partners in the community, and I just wanted to mention BA is a partnership with Sandridge to deal with the median between Broadway Avenue and Dean A. McGee. We've already mentioned the generous contribution from Chesapeake, but item BB is acceptance of the $39,000 to keep Macklinburg Pool open. 6BC is an acceptance of a donation from OKC Public Tennis for installation of an irrigation system at the tennis center. And 6BD is acknowledging a donation by the Regional Food Bank to help provide meals for children participating in the Summer Play in the Park program. And I just wanted to mention all of these to say that this community is so blessed with community partners that help us do our work every single day, and this is just a small reflection of the kinds of things that they help our city do and help our citizens do every day.
Appreciate you drawing attention to that. Thank you. Any other comments or questions on the consent docket before we vote? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item seven is the concurrence docket.
Where the consent docket...
All right, looks like we have 15 items on the concurrence docket. Comments or questions, anything there? Ready to vote? All right, cast your votes. Concurrence docket passed unanimously. Moves us on to item eight. These are items that require a separate vote. We start with a series of zoning cases. The first is in Ward 5. The address is 1002 Southwest 89th Street. It's currently a planned unit development, and it would be a new pud if it passes. David?
Yes. Is the representative here to speak? Please come forward.
My name's Brian Coon with Coon Engineering, representing applicants.
Okay. Could you just give us a little bit of background concerning this project?
Sure. This property was zoned, there's actually three, kind of three tracks. The apartment tract that's right on 89th, there's a residential part that's south of that called, that's vacant, and then over on the east, there's a commercial piece that used to have a Starbucks and some things in that. So the apartments were zoned through a PUD process many, many years ago. Building permit was acquired several years after that. For some reason, and we don't know why, several of us remember discussing part of the buildings on the interior of that apartment building, project would be three-story. It was never entered into a record. We can't find any record of ever discussing that. When they came and got their building permit, they got a building permit for two of the buildings to have three stories in the interior of the development. So, like I said, building permit was issued, buildings are built, apartments are pretty full, they've been operating for a long time. They were working on some new lending. The lending institution found out that it didn't meet zoning because of these two three-story buildings, so that's why I'm here. We've added a lot of landscaping on 89th and along Klein on the east side.
Yes, and I've driven by there, and it's a very nice facility. And it's been recommended by the planning commission, so I don't have any questions. I move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Comments or questions on item 8A1? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Item 8A2 is a zoning case in Ward 2. The address is 3140 Northwest 38th Street. It's currently an R1 single-family residential district, and it would become a simplified planned unit development. Ed?
Is anyone here to speak on this?
No one has signed up to speak on this item. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on item 8A2? on item eight, A2? Looks like we're good to go.
My understanding is it was recommended for approval, so I move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item eight, A2. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight, A3 is a zoning case in Ward 7. The address is 11512 Robinwood Lane. It's currently AA agricultural district, and it would become a new spud. It's in Ward 7. Skip?
I haven't received any calls or objections to it.
And I don't know if there's a representative here, but I would recommend that we move this.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Comments or questions on item eight, A3? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight, A4 is a zoning case in Ward 6. The address is 1400 Northwest 3rd Street. It's currently R3 medium-density residential district, and it would become a simplified planned unit development district. Meg?
Thank you, Mayor. Dennis Box, I think, is here representing the owner. If you'd come forward. This is a really interesting project, a reuse and reconfiguring of the old Willard School into office space. And I believe that there are a couple of technical evaluations that we need to accept here at the meeting today.
Yes. Dennis Box, Matt the applicant, and James Murray, General Counsel, is here. LSP Industries, as you all know, has taken an active part in trying to renovate much of the buildings in the surrounding area. They, through one of their companies, is going to purchase this property. In fact, they're purchasing today. The reason that the special permits were part of the application is because they had already been approved. We are more than willing to take those out of your final approval because we are closing on the property today. As you indicated, this is an old school. It's a very attractive building, and it will now operate as offices for one of their companies. Part of the area will be utilized for parking in the future. We think that this will be a, an area that will be revitalized with some additional potential warehouses or offices. And we're excited about this site, and we appreciate you being involved and working with us to get the zoning accomplished.
Thank you. This, it really is an exciting project. It brings jobs to an area that need them, help to revitalize an interesting part of the city, and we're very appreciative of this reuse project. I would move approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item eight, A4. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Item eight, B1 is a final hearing. This is on the new National Electric Code. Brings us in compliance. Need a motion on eight, B1. All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And we need to vote on item eight, B2 also, don't we? Okay, another motion.
Move the item.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item eight, C, and D are public hearings. Actually, C is the public hearing, but they're both on the same item. This is the Capitol Hill Assessment District. This is a public hearing on item eight, C. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on this item? All right, council comments or a motion?
No, I just, I guess I would just comment, this is the third year of 10 years that the city's participated with the Capitol Hill Main Street Program, Capitol Hill Business District. And they've recently hired a new executive director. I saw Jorge Hernandez here. It looks like maybe he had to leave us already, but he's doing a wonderful job, and I really expect Capitol Hill to be one of the very next bright spots in commercial revitalization for the city. So I would move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on item eight, C. Cast your votes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Before we go, I have a question. It doesn't have anything to do with the assessment, but it has to do with the street. Are there any restrictions on historic buildings or anything of that, like along 25th Street? Are any of those, is that area designated for historical preservation, or? I just was there Friday and realized that another building along 25th Street had been torn down, and I just wondered.
Are you talking, you're talking about the building on, in Capitol Hill?
Mm-hmm.
I'm Susan Miller with the planning department.
No, I'm not talking about Capitol Hill. Capitol Hill goes all the way to 134th Street. We-
Oh, yeah, okay.
But I'm talking about 25th Street.
Capitol Hill is in an urban design overlay, so it is, it does have design review. It's not under HP, but yes, they did have to receive a certificate of approval for that demolition. It was in pretty bad shape, so that's why the demolition was approved by the Urban Design Commission.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
You're good to go. All right, we're voting on item eight, C. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And on eight, D is a companion item. This will put the Assessment District into effect. So how about a motion there?
Move the item.
Cast your votes on eight, D. Passed unanimously. Item eight, E. Okay, the emergency requested on item eight, D.
Move the emergency.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight, E is a public hearing. Item EF and G, well, puts us in compliance with our new financial policies. And so the first one is the ambulance fee, and this is the second hearing on this particular item. Any comments or questions on the ambulance fee?
Yeah, this brings us in line with the new Gadsby regulations also.
All right. Cast your votes on item eight, E. Passed unanimously. Then item eight, F, deals with the 911 fee.
Move the item.
Let's see, someone signed up to speak?
Okay, sorry.
Okay, no one's signed up to speak on this item. Anyone? Yes, Fanny?
I'm sorry.
Our apologies. Come on forward.
My name is Fanny Bates. I live at 701 Northeast 15th Street. I don't know, it just, it's frustrating that the city of Oklahoma City seems to not pay any attention at all to tornado preparedness. And it's like that behind the scenes, your lawyers have told you that you don't want to get involved into tornado preparedness because of liability issues. But the people of Oklahoma City want this on the agenda. And I don't like it when I see it saying that all the money you have for emergency management is going to go to other things, and there's not a dime for tornado preparedness. We are in tornado alley. We have always been in tornado alley, and we will always be in tornado alley. And we want you to accept some responsibility for helping protect our citizens. I am sick of hearing them tell us on TV to go get in the bathtub when a tornado is coming. A bathtub is not going to protect you from a direct hit from a tornado. And we need a plan, and you need to help us get that plan.
Thanks for coming down. Any other comments or questions on item eight, F? This is the public hearing regarding the 911 fee and getting us in compliance in our financial policy. Sure, come on up.
I just wanted to-
Joshua, we'll need your name and address for the record.
Joshua Zambrano, and 800 California Avenue.
Okay.
And I just wanted to recommend that you look into basement zoning and just placing additional requirements upon the structures that are going to be created. I mean, I don't think that would place a whole lot of extra expense upon the city itself, so it would be at least, it would help for the future anyway. So I don't think, think it would require much more resources from the city. So that's all I want to say.
All right, thanks for coming down. Ready to vote on item eight, F? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And item eight, G, is a similar item. This one guards the original MAPS use tax fee. Fanny, did you want to speak on this item, too?
I need to tell you my name again?
No, we remember.
Okay. Well, first of all, I want to know why we need this, this ordinance. And secondly, I want to know, at some point, I want to know what you're planning to do with the Foster Center. Are you going to change the use of the Foster Center as part of the MAPS project, as part of MAPS 3? Are, is there a plan to destroy the Foster Center? There's a rumor going around town that there's a plan to destroy it, and I want to know if that's part of this, or if that's just a rumor.
Well, it wouldn't have anything to do with this item.
Yeah, this item specifically has to do with changing our reporting requirements to fall in compliance with Gadsby. But in response to her issue regarding the Foster Center, there are no plans that I'm aware of. It's not a part of MAPS 3, and there are not any plans within the Parks Department budget or Parks Department to modify the use of the Foster Center.
All right, ready to vote on item eight, G? How about a motion?
Move the item.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight, H is a public hearing. This is the second time we've seen this item come forward, and this changes, makes some changes to our HP ordinances. And we have a couple of people that have signed up. Joshua, you want to come up and talk about this item?
Um, I don't know.
Okay.
I was mainly, oh, should I state my name and address again?
That's okay. We, I think we've got it.
All right. I just wanted to, my main concern is with job effectiveness, and whether it would be more effective to demolish buildings that could otherwise be useful, or to renovate them. Because when you've got a company and you want to create jobs as effectively as possible per dollar spent, for example, the report, the spending effects of milit, the effects of military and domestic spending priorities, you, you want to, to make it labor-effective, where it's mostly the labor and less, less cost for materials. And when you're demolishing these buildings, you're spending a lot on the technology to tear them down, and then you're using even more money to create a new building. I just wonder if that's as effective for infrastructure creation as well as for job creation as to just renovate, since that would be more labor-intensive. So that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thanks for your input.
Mayor?
Yes.
You know, that's, that's not a debate that is new one before the council. I mean, in the 80s, we went through a very slow economic time, and demolition of buildings went up again in the 80s. When, so that's, that's not a new concern. I actually share the, his feeling that the economic value that we waste by tearing some of these buildings down is a negative on the economy. The problem is, leaving them there is also a negative. It's a, it's a negative in another way that doesn't have to do with dollars and cents invested in a building. What it has to do with is the dollars and cents of the value and the quality of life of the people that live near those buildings. So I don't think that's an argument that is just, that's dismissed. I want you to understand that it's not something that none of us have ever thought about, because I thought about it at great length. And I've gone through two very serious times when we're tearing down more buildings than if the economy were where we'd like it to be, we wouldn't be tearing those buildings down. But I don't know of any other solution. You can't, you cannot leave those buildings in the neighborhoods where they exist and expect there to be a quality of life there until, and that won't change until the market comes back for those buildings. It just will not change. And the city doesn't have the money to be the renovator or the rehabber of those buildings. And I don't know that's an appropriate role for government anyway. So it's, it's a, it's a serious catch-22 when you start trying to figure out what's the best. If you were the guy living next door to it, you would think tearing the building down's a good idea. So it just kind of depends on who's oxes being gored, whether your idea's the right one, or what we're doing is the right one. I just want you to, I wanted you to know that it's not something, we're getting ready to vote here, but it's not something that some of us at least haven't given serious thought to about the economic impact of tearing those buildings down.
All right, Fanny, did you want to speak on item eight, H?
It's my understanding that one of the things that you're talking about here is reducing the number of people on that board down from like 11 to five or something like that. And I am in favor of a more diverse board. I'd rather see it with 11 people on it than with five. We've already made some mistakes that thousands of people in Oklahoma have been deeply hurtful. When somebody approved destroying the Black Dispatch building where Roscoe Dunphy had run the Black Dispatch for 40 years, there are a whole lot of people in this town that know who Roscoe Dunphy is and love him. And that was a horrible mistake that was made. The buildings where Charlie Christian played, or Jimmy Russians sang, all of that was destroyed so you could put yuppie condos down there. And there are people in this city that have not forgotten that. And I just feel like that the more people that are on that board, the more likely we are to have fairness.
All right, thank you.
May I just make a, I'm sorry. If I could just make a very quick comment, just for those that are watching. Last, when this was introduced, we talked about the potential of changing the definition of one of the members from a licensed real estate broker or appraiser to a real estate professional. That change is in the works, and it will be brought back to us as an amendment when this is reviewed next week.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Steph.
Just for clarification on the board, Susan, can you clarify for us how many members are presently and what this resolution, or this ordinance modification will have at the end of the day?
Currently, there are 11 HP commissioners. This proposal takes it to nine commissioners, which is, you know, the same amount of council people we have, planning commissioner members we have. That does represent, or that could represent, one per HP district. We do have nine. So we still feel that we can be, you know, capture diversity in nine. That's a pretty significant number still. And as Councilwoman, or Councilwoman Sayer sort of referenced, within that, we also have specific requirements for certain people in professions. So we do try to create a diverse HP commission, and I think nine members still can do that.
What is the diversity of the commission as it stands right now?
Excuse me?
What is the diversity?
We have, I don't know if I can do this off the top of my head. I'll have to get the ordinance. We do have a requirement for an architect, an attorney, as Councilwoman Sayer said, a real estate professional, which we're, now we're changing it to. We have requirements for a certain amount of them to live in HP districts. That may be about it. I can't remember exactly. We do, urban planner. I think it can be an architect or an urban planner.
Okay.
Is there any ethnic diversity on the commission?
Not currently, no.
All right, very, ready to vote on item eight, H? Comments or questions? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And then there's item eight, H2. This is a similar item on the HP ordinance.
Move the item.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item HI, it's the second time we've seen this. This makes some changes on the criteria of our overlay districts. Fanny, you wanted to come speak on this item?
No.
Okay, comments or questions on item eight, I? How about a motion then?
Move it.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight, J is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under eight, J? Yeah, Joshua, come on up.
I'm just more interested in drawing attention to the possibilities for, for what would be done after replacing the dilapidated structures. The, what, what they could be used for, for example. We might want to build more vertically for high rises, something that I noticed this city doesn't really have in comparison to other major cities to make more effective use of its land space. And in other cases, the, the placement of the properties might be crucial to, to building the downtown, so it might be especially necessary to replace them. But in other cases, for example, if we ended up needing a school building somewhere down the road, then we might, we might end up just basically replacing it. And that's a concern of mine, that we just end up throwing money away and then building a whole new building. Another concern is that we could, we could renovate and, and put them towards public housing or something, or just renovate them somehow, so that the money wouldn't be thrown away like that, and that there might be other applications for the buildings. And again, I think renovating them would be more labor-intensive and thus more cost-effective as far as job creation, because we wouldn't be using all the money on the demolition just on labor to rejuvenate them, I guess. So I just wanted to bring different considerations to the table.
Thanks for coming down. Comments or questions from council on item eight, J? Ready to vote? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight, K is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under eight, K? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight, L is our second public hearing. This would adopt a resolution involving the fire, the position of the public safety sales tax, and the first one has to do with fire. tax, and the first one has to do with fire. Anyone here wishing to speak under any item under 8L?
All right.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And item 8M is also the second public hearing, and this one deals with police. Comments or questions on this item? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8N deals with a Ward 7 issue involving a revocable right-of-way permit. This is allowing them to have fireworks displays on July 3rd and 4th in Bricktown. Skip.
Move it.
All right. Comments or questions on item 8N? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And item 8O is the budget. We do have one slight change on item 8O1 and 2. Those dollar amounts should be reversed so that item 8O1 represents $100,000 and item 8O2 represents $353,006.
That's correct. And Craig Freeman's here to give us a short overview of the budget. And one, before Craig starts, one thing I want to point out is that we had a fairly good discussion last week regarding transit, and there were a lot of questions to ask regarding transit. We have not reflected new budget changes in this budget with transit. We anticipate, we just, we just couldn't answer the questions and bring the material back by, by today. So we anticipate in the next couple of weeks of bringing back a item to transit, and if it's something the council would like to do, we could do a budget amendment at that time and adopt any changes that the council would like to see in that area. And so we didn't forget about that. We just couldn't get it done in time for this week, and we'll be bringing back and having another discussion, follow-up on the, on the discussion that we had last week.
All right. Craig?
Thank you. We just wanted to go real quickly with over a few things within the budget and talk about the changes and what is included with those changes in the budget. And just take a look again at what we've done with the budget process, the, the review that the president's gone through. Actually, when we start our budget process and we're planning for the financial and the operational planning for our budget, it starts back November, December timeframe when we begin working with the departments. They prepare their budgets, submit those, they're reviewed with the city manager's office. And there's a final review that we do coming through March and April with the departments and the city manager's office. We actually have a council workshop in January that just presents kind of a status of where we are with the budget, where things are looking financially, what we think we'll be able to do within the budget, and then talk about the economic outlook and about the, provide the five-year forecast as well at the same time. We did the budget introduction on May the 10th and actually had a couple of departments that presented on May the 10th, and then followed that with finance committee meetings on May the 24th and June the 7th, and are here today for the adoption. Once the budget's adoption, we'll actually adopt it. It'll take effect on July 1st. As we started working through the budget, there were some definite direction that we received from the council, some things we wanted to try to achieve this year. Obviously, in this current year, the revenues were coming in much stronger than what was anticipated. And so one of the first priorities was to eliminate or reduce, reduce or eliminate our reliance upon temporary revenue sources that we had to use to help balance the budget for FY 11. One of the, one of the most significant was the MAPS 3 use tax, that we were using that on a temporary basis to pay for 100 police and fire positions. It was 55 police positions and 45 fire positions. One of the first steps that we wanted to take, or the council directed us to take, and we did that with a budget amendment, was to repay the MAPS 3 use tax in the current year for the funding that was used to help pay for those positions. Because we were doing better in the general fund with our sales tax revenues, to repay that, so it makes that fund whole. Everything's in place to do that, and we'll process that transfer at the end of the year. The next step was looking at the FY 12 budget, was to ensure that we could move all of those positions back into the general fund, off of that temporary revenue source. And so that has been included within the proposed budget. And in addition to that was the $2 million that we relied upon from the Recovery Act funding to fund transit services in this current year, to be able to, to fund that through the general fund in FY 12. And that has been included. So it's an additional $2 million for transit services. It's included in the general fund budget. The total amount that's, of the transfer to the, to transit, I think, is around $11 million now. And so that is included within the budget and has a $2 million increase to help eliminate our reliance upon those temporary revenue sources. One of the other issues then, priorities, was to restore services to the degree that we could. Over the last two years, we've eliminated about 136 positions. Haven't really eliminated directly any services, but significantly impacted other services or reduced service levels. The idea then was to try to restore as many of those positions, and really the focus is on the services, but positions create the services. And so we were able to put 29 positions back into the budget with the grant that you all accepted and approved, the, from Homeland, Department of Homeland Security. 29 firefighter positions are included in the budget this, next year, and that's the number of positions that were eliminated in FY 11. Also, 22 uniformed police positions are added back into the general fund budget. That's the number of police positions that were eliminated in the FY 11 budget. So for police and fire, the uniformed positions, the full number that were actually eliminated as a result of the recession and going into this budget, are added back into the FY 12 budget. In addition to that, there's 52 civilian positions that are being added back, and that's in multiple different funds. The majority of the positions that were eliminated were in the general fund or our internal service funds during the recession, but this is restoring funds. Not all of the funds, it doesn't get us, get all the services back, but restores a portion of those that were eliminated during the recession through FY 10 and 11. The two additional programs, actually three programs that were discussed specifically were during the council review, the finance committee meetings, were the neighborhood crack ceiling program, which is a total of about $350,000. $100,000 of that is for capital equipment to get geared up, to be able, you know, startup costs, to be able to begin that program. The program does add three additional positions, full-time positions. It has some part-time funding in there as well to fully fund a crew and will, is estimated that it'll pave, or it will do the crack ceiling for about 140 lane miles of neighborhood streets. And so that is included in the budget today, in that fund summary that was attached with the budget, that is included. The graffiti and debris removal program, similar to the Shine program, the idea is it'll be managed through the Development Services Department, and we rely upon community service work and for volunteer work to be able to provide for the labor for the program to do the graffiti removal and debris removal. We will do an RFP next fiscal year for the services, for someone to manage this program. Estimated cost right now is $100,000. That's included in Development Services budget. The street resurfacing that we discussed, we talked about using fund balance to help us with doing additional street resurfacing because our fund balance is beginning to build back up with the growth that we've had in our revenues this year. Mr. Couch had recommended that we put that off until the beginning of next fiscal year when we know better where our fund balance is. We're gonna, we think we're gonna be in good shape, but that way we'll know, we'll have a better idea of exactly where we finished out the year and know what the impact would be. We talked about doing between $2 and $4 million in additional street resurfacing, and so that will be something that's brought back to the council probably sometime in August is the expectation. And so that is not incorporated into the budget, but the other two programs are. As we made those changes, the discussion was that we would actually reduce our contingency, leaves our contingency a little bit below 2%, which is our policy level, but still leaves it at about $6 million. We think that's still a good position for us to be in going into next fiscal year. So it doesn't change the overall budget, it just realigns where the, where the funding is and moves it out into the departments from non-departmental where we have our contingency, out into Public Works and Development Services where those programs would be managed. So the total overall budget doesn't change. And the same thing is true, I just got a couple of the slides here that we had on the, on the division, you know, since we're only talking about about $450,000, it doesn't make a significant change. Slightly increases the public services portion of the budget because that's where Public Works and Development Services are. If you look at it on a level with a budget or expenditure category, doesn't make a significant change here either, maybe like a 10th of a percent in one of the categories. So it's pretty much the same budget that we presented before, but it does add these two additional programs. On the staffing, we come back and it ends up with the three additional staff that are added in the neighborhood street crack ceiling program. There's a total of 100 positions that are added back in this year. And you can kind of see the up and down that occurs through the years as we see recessions or we have an economic downturn and our sales tax slows down. The, you can see that we're moving back more quickly than what we did out of the recession, coming out of O1 and O2, as the positions that climbed back slowly, we're able to restore those positions more quickly and begin to move back towards getting services back to where they were. However, if you look across the line where that FY 12 staffing level, it's 4,426 positions, it's almost exactly equal to what we had in 1993. And so still by comparison to where we were back in, in the nineties, that's where our staffing is compared to right now. And so it's not back to where we would like to be, but it's still beginning to, it is beginning to move us back into that direction of getting services restored where we can. So as I said, the agenda does include the neighborhood, the crack ceiling program for neighborhood streets. It includes the debris removal and graffiti removal program, and with your approval of the budget, will take effect on July the 1st. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Comments or questions for Craig? Hold on, Josh. Let us go up here first. Any other comments or questions from council?
I have a question on the graffiti and, and debris removal. Is the debris removal, is that a program that we already have?
We, we have, we do some debris removal with, through our solid waste management. We're taking care of like rural roads, the specific areas where there's illegal dumping is what they deal with. And then in parks, they'll do some debris removal as they're mowing the medians and rights of way. And this was to go into other areas that we don't go into.
We do graffiti removal on parks and in our, in public right-of-ways. This, this $100,000 is, is to kind of replicate the Shine program that, that it's out there. And we would go out and try to contract with a nonprofit as intended, put out a request for proposals and see if there's a nonprofit that would like to embrace this program and use community service volunteers and people trying to, to build up their resumes and want to volunteer work and help out some neighborhoods.
Okay.
In that, in that regard, how soon will that RFP be ready?
We're drafting it now. So I would, I would guess within the next couple of weeks.
Okay. But I, I'd like to talk to you, I've got some ideas about, about something that needs to be done in that. I'd like to talk to you before it goes out.
We can do that.
Comments or questions for Craig on the budget?
Just a minor question, Your Honor. Greg, can you give me a couple of examples of what, on the slide that was entitled Budget Overview, where you showed other operating funds? What would be an example of other operating funds?
Other non-operating funds?
Well, it says other operating funds.
Other operating funds would be what we call, is made up of primarily the airport, water utilities, wastewater utilities, solid waste, and drainage. That's mostly what, that, that, that's, I think all of what that $208 million is.
Okay. So those are, they're trusts or something?
Right. They're, they're operations that we provide that are not funded out of the general fund.
And the capital in other non-operating funds would be the?
Most of all, that's capital. That's MAPS for kids, that's MAPS 3, that's our GO bonds, that's, but there are a few specific non-operating funds. It's, this is capital and non-operating funds, and an example of a non-operating fund would be like asset forfeiture dollars that are in the police department.
I just wanted some examples of, thank you very much.
Okay. Craig and I went over that yesterday. I was up to speed.
Other comments or questions for Craig on the budget? All right. Craig, thank you. Joshua, come on up.
I wanted to express a quick concern about all of the unspecified expenses that have been getting passed. There was $900,000 for May 31st, and I'm noticing a bunch in pages four through nine. And while most of it is open market, I noticed a few are no-bid as well. And I'm just curious, I guess, why, why these expenses can't be specified. So that's all I wanted to say.
All right. Thank you. Ready to vote on the budget? We're voting on item 8O. I'll need a, a motion on the amendment.
We need to answer what he asked us, though, I think.
I don't know if we can give him an answer today.
Well, I can give him an answer.
Okay. Go ahead.
You can't, you can't specify things that you buy on a regular basis. You have to have the ability to go out and make purchases to buy certain items, and they're all delineated, the kind of items we're talking about. You have to have the ability to go buy those on the market. You don't know how much of it you're gonna need. You would not want to buy all of it the first day of the fiscal year. You buy it as you need it. And so you get contracts with people and you buy it when you need it. That way we don't have to store it, we don't have to worry about buying stuff we don't need. That's, that's why we do it that way. And this is as open as you can possibly be in doing that, trying to run it as efficiently and effectively as we can do it.
How about a motion on item 8O1? This is the First Amendment on graffiti and debris removal. Cast your votes on item 8O1. Passed unanimously. Item 8O2 is the amendment on the neighborhood street ceiling crack program. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And item 8O3 is the budget. Comments or questions? All right. Cast your votes. Budget passes. Thank you. Craig? Thank you very much. Appreciate the process. Jim, congratulations. Good budget year.
Thank you, sir. Thanks to all of you. It was, it was, obviously, you gave us clear direction, the beginning of things to accomplish, and, and the revenues that came in allowed us to accomplish those things.
Item 8P is to approve the Emergency Physicians Foundation Medical Control Board Budget for fiscal year 2011 and 12. Anyone sign up to speak on this? All right. Cast your votes on item 8P. Cast your votes. Item 8Q is a salary continuation. Understand we do not need executive session?
That's correct.
Okay. Item moved to executive, it's not moved to executive session, this is voting on the resolution. Item 8Q, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8R, understand we do not need executive session?
That's correct.
Okay. How about a motion? Cast your votes on 8R. Passed unanimously. Item 8S, I understand we do not need executive session?
No.
Okay. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And item 8T, understand we do not need executive session?
Correct.
Cast your votes, and it passed unanimously.
Do you want to thank Councilman Salyer for sitting through the mediation on that?
Item 8U, some real estate acquisition for the MAPS 3 park.
That's correct. Primarily a track needed for the Skydance Bridge.
Comments or questions on item 8U? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8V is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8V? All right. How about a motion then? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9 is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 9A? All right. How about a motion? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 10 is items from council. Gary, you want to get us started?
I wanted to invite members of the public, council, city staff to a meeting this Thursday night at 7:00. It's a, it's a meeting of the CIR club, but basically it's turned into a town hall meeting on the idea of urban chickens. I know that that's a, that's a controversial issue. Multiple members of city staff, including from the municipal councilor's office and Development Services, will be at that town hall meeting. I don't think the, the mission really is a citywide change, but the exploring ways of maybe incremental change and just testing in certain neighborhoods that overwhelmingly want to see this issue, there are mechanisms like creating an urban conservation district or simplified planned unit development where you could do a test case in, in one particular neighborhood. And that's really the reason that the municipal councilor's office and Development Services will be there to answer questions on how that might be accomplished. I just really was, I went to this Congress for New Urbanism meeting in Madison. Jeff Speck, I think, who has the, the respect of the council and those that he's worked with, like Andre DiWani, really moved by how fearful and all their attention is now moving towards local food production and distribution. They're clearly very nervous with fuel prices escalating, population exploding, conflict over water, and whether you believe in warming. Food prices were at a record high in February, and I think they're, they're very fearful that, that cities really need to move towards feeding their populace, that that will, in the years to come, the price of food is going to become very, very expensive and it'll be more and more difficult to feed the population. This is just one mechanism, and instead of doing it citywide, maybe we could just test it in a particular neighborhood that really wants it. And those are the kind of things we'll explore on Thursday night. Again, that's at United Life Church at 3332 North Meridian at 7:00. Thank you.
Larry?
I'd just like to thank the neighbors at the Windsor Forest for inviting my wife
and I to their picnic this past Saturday. Great time together. And encourage all the neighbors to participate in their picnic. Windsor Hills has their picnic coming up between now and the end of the month. And then also like to congratulate River Park for coming in second, the number two neighborhood in the country at a recent meeting. And you'll be hearing more about that on the Ward Three TV show this month. But the congratulations to Georgie Rasko of Neighborhood Alliance, and for Gina Daniel, and all the neighbors that made this possible. Thank you, Your Honor.
Pete?
David? Yes, thank you. I had the pleasure of attending two Homeowners Association meetings this past week. First of all was the John Glenn Neighborhood Association, and we had a presentation from Oklahoma City Community College concerning the expansion of the parking lot at their child development center in the neighborhood. And they've really gone all out trying to be a good neighbor and do that in a manner that's going to be very helpful to the neighborhood. And then Saturday, got to attend the Kingsridge Neighborhood Association and got to meet a lot of very nice people. Thank you.
Meg?
Thank you, Mayor. I just briefly wanted to thank my friends at the Heronville Neighborhood Association for inviting me to attend their 19th birthday party. Had a great turnout, and Dee Downer particularly should be mentioned for organizing it. Mesa Park had its neighborhood picnic on Tuesday. It was extremely well-attended by lots of neighbors. And I wanted to extend quick congratulations to the Dead Center Film Festival group. Oklahoma City was abuzz with movies all weekend, starting Wednesday night with, they closed Broadway and showed a movie outdoors. And Saturday night at the closing, we had outdoor movies down at Fourth and Broadway. It was a fantastic weekend, put on by Lance McDaniel, who's the executive director of the film festival. And I also wanted to congratulate the National Cowboy and Western Heritage Museum. It was a weekend of movies and western art and drag boat racing, but I miss the drag boats. But you should get a nice sales tax boost, Mr. Manager, as a result of the sales out at the Cowboy Museum on Saturday night.
Well, I'm just glad you're conscious and spending your, the spendable money in Oklahoma City.
It wasn't me, but I understand there were at least 30 folks from out of town that came in and bought works of art out there, which is a really nice addition. We love having those outside dollars coming into our community. It was a great weekend.
Great. Skip?
I would just like to thank the council for your support in the changing of the name of Phillips Avenue between Stanton L. Young Boulevard and 13th Street to Children's Avenue. The new Children's Hospital is just an absolute fantastic, you know, just a complete different landscape as it relates to a hospital. And the changing of the name to give the hospital its own identity of Children's Avenue is just going to be a great marquee for that whole area. And so if you haven't had an opportunity to go by to see the Children's Hospital, it's very, very finely designed, and the architectural design of it just makes children feel like that they're in a completely different place than a hospital. And so with the naming of the street now to Children's Hospital, it only adds to the marquee of the hospital itself. Thank you.
Pat?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a quick question. This is a question I asked city manager this morning in the parking lot. I'd like for him to repeat it. And that is, does the city have any plans to participate in FEMA's program or to assist people in putting in tornado shelters?
Yeah, there's been some discussion about that in the media recently. We did roll out that program a few years ago, embraced a FEMA program where you could get tax breaks on doing in-place storm shelters. UConn and Midwest City are rolling those out, and we're looking at the pros and cons of doing that again. There was some success with that, and so we're evaluating that internally.
In the previous program, what kind of cons emerged as you administered the program? What went wrong with it? Why wasn't it, you know...
Well, I think it was fine. I think we participated when it was offered.
Okay. But it was, and essentially you said pros and cons. Were there any specific cons that you ran into that...
I'm not sure I may answer that. I don't know of any offhand, that's all I...
Thank you.
All right, on to the city manager reports. And first, we have a presentation on TIF.
We do. We've deferred this, I think, five times now, and so I think we'll get to this this morning. And so Kathy O'Connor is here this morning to talk to us about tax increment financing. And this is a bit of a broad look at all of our TIF districts.
Good morning. I'm glad that we could get to this presentation this morning. You know, originally, this presentation was the result of some questions that came up at a city council meeting about tax increment financing and the process that we use to allocate TIF funds to individual projects. But in light of that, we thought we would go through the entire tax increment financing program that the city has, talk about how it's used, what some of our TIF, what all of our TIF districts are, and then talk about that allocation process that we use for specific projects. So first of all, are you going to flick them on? Okay. Tax increment financing is a local redevelopment technique that cities can use to help fund specified public and private improvements in projects. The tax increment financing allows a community to capture the increase in property values that result from redevelopment in a blighted area. And the important thing to remember about tax increment financing is that it's very strictly governed and prescribed by state statute. It's authorized under the Local Development Act and the Oklahoma Constitution. It can only be used in specific areas and for specific purposes. And I think Oklahoma City has had a very conservative approach to how we've used tax increment financing compared to what you might have heard in other states and in other communities. So tax increment financing districts can be created for up to 25 years, and in the process, the taxing jurisdictions that are impacted are a part of our process. There are several taxing jurisdictions that collect ad valorem taxes that include the county, the school districts, the career tech system. In Oklahoma City's case, it could include the city-county health department, the library system. So all of those different taxing entities are involved as a part of our process. The details of how it works, ad valorem taxes from the base assessed value continue to go to the taxing entities, as I mentioned, the school district, the county, career tech taxing jurisdictions. The increment equals the ad valorem taxes from the net increase in assessed values. And then that increment is used to finance project costs. As a part of the planning process to create a TIF district, you can create an increment area where the incremental increases in values can be captured versus a project area, which is where the funds, the increment funds can be spent. And this is an important distinction that we'll go through a little bit further because it's a mechanism that we used in TIF District Number Two, which is the downtown TIF district. Here's a slide that kind of steps through the calculation of the increment. And in this one, it's $100 million market value multiplied by the 11% assessment ratio. And we used round numbers in this, obviously, and a rounded mill levy at $100 per $1,000 of assessed value, just to make the calculations simpler. $100 million taxable value multiplied by the 11% assessment ratio equals the assessed value, and that's $11 million. After the project or the area generates incremental increases in value, your one assessed value increased, in this example, by $2 million to $13 million. The taxes generated by that increase, by the $2 million increase, are $20,000. And that's the amount that's allocated to the TIF district. The remaining taxes, $110,000, continues to go to all of the taxing jurisdictions. So this just kind of steps through the calculations that are used to create, you know, what the TIF allocation will be. When we go to look at creating a TIF district...
Kathy, can you back up just a second? I'm not sure I understand that.
Let me see if I can back up.
Just that last screen.
It's not back up? Okay.
If, maybe see if I can say it the way I understand. If the assessed valuation in this particular situation went up $2 million, the TIF district would get $20,000 of that $2 million?
No. The taxes generated from that, $2 million, I mean, okay, the taxes generated...
They'd get 100% of the increase.
That's just the increase, yeah.
All right.
Sorry. May not have been clear about that. Okay. Let's go forward. Some of the steps that we go through when creating a TIF district include trying to, doing the work that we need to do to identify how it conforms with the requirements in the state statutes. And some of the requirements are that the area has to be a reinvestment area, which is a state-defined term. It has to be, it can be a historic preservation area. It can be an enterprise zone or enterprise area, which is another state and federal designation. And it can be project-specific or area-specific. We have several TIF districts that cover a broader area, like the downtown TIF district. And then we have others that are more project-specific, like TIF Number Six, which just encompasses a single project. So typically, in Oklahoma City, we have used a broader area to help stabilize the creation of increment of taxes and to lessen the impact on the taxing jurisdictions. The second step in the process is a resolution is presented to the city council, asking them to appoint a TIF review committee for the proposed district. And this is the first step in the process. And it's the appointment of the TIF review committee and that committee that begins the process of reviewing the information and the data about where and how that TIF district should be created. Okay. The TIF review committee is made up of a representative from each of the taxing jurisdictions. So we have somebody from whatever public school district is impacted. For example, I-89 serves on several of our TIF review committees. Whatever career tech district is impacted, so Career Tech District 22 serves on several of them. There's somebody from the library, city-county health, all serve as members of our TIF review committee. The statutes also require that there is a representative appointed by the mayor and council. In the past, for several of our districts, that's been Mayor Norick, and that there is a planning commission representative. Typically, it will be the planning commissioner for whoever's ward is included in the district. And then there are three at-large members that are picked by the committee from a list of seven that are provided by the mayor. And I'm going to try to get these right for our downtown TIF district. And I talk about that one as an example because it is our most active TIF district. Those at-large members are Bill Warren, Chris Kaufman, and Dick Stubbs. So those are our three at-large members in the downtown district. The TIF review committee and the direct staff to develop a project plan that identifies the district area, describes the basis for eligibility, which are the criteria that are outlined in the state statutes. The project plan has to include a budget for the TIF expenditures and designates an implementation entity. And this is typically a city beneficiary trust. The Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust is the implementation designee for several of our districts, as is the Oklahoma City Redevelopment Authority for some of the other TIF districts that impact the health sciences area. The next step in the process is that the project plan is approved by a variety of public entities. First, the TIF review committee reviews and approves the project plan, and it is forwarded to the planning commission for hearing and presentation. After, the planning commission recommends approval on to the city council, and it is heard by the city council for approval. The next step in the process, and this is really where some of the questions, I think, came up in the past, is how do we make the decision to allocate money to TIF projects? In TIF District Number Two, which is the downtown TIF district, it encompasses the area from I-235 to Northwest 13th, Classen Boulevard, to the current alignment of I-40. And so that's the increment area for TIF District Number Two. So the project area, the area where money can be spent, is a much larger area that goes down to southwest 27th Street, I believe. And that's important because we could allocate funds to that project area in that broader geographical area. So the allocation process is something that we use mostly for TIF Two. A developer, an interested party comes to the city and says, "We understand you have a TIF district. We have a project. We think it's a great project, and we would like an allocation of TIF dollars." And so this is kind of the process that we have set out in policy to go through. First of all, the developer and the staff meet and discuss the project. It's very important that we have a good understanding of what the developer's assumptions are, how broad the scope of the project is, what the timing of it is, how much he plans to invest, and all of the other details. The next step is that we convene what we call the TIF Advisory Panel. And this is a city-created staff committee. It is not prescribed by the state statutes. Something that we did so that we had a process that we could tell developers, this is the process you're going to go through to get a TIF allocation. And the people that currently are a part of the TIF Advisory Panel are Brett Bryant in the city manager's office, Joe Van Bullard with the Urban Renewal Authority, Russell Klaus, the planning director, Jim Lewellin, who is an engineer in the Public Works Department, myself, and Wiley Williams from the municipal counselor's office. The panel reviews the projects, and we focus on how can we use TIF to make public improvements. Typically, we've used TIF funds to help fund infrastructure improvements like water line or sewer line enhancements. We've used it to fund streetscapes, obviously, in many areas, including the Maywood Park area. We have provided what's called assistance and development financing. And this is an authorized cost under the state statutes. And recently, we've used this on the Level One project, where we're going to provide TIF after the project's completed and after the assessed values have hit the county assessors' rolls. The TIF funding will be provided, and that's an example of assistance and development financing. We try to balance developer optimism with what we think the market really is. Sometimes that's difficult to do because developers are hopefully very enthusiastic about their projects. We look at the financial aspects of the project to make sure that the increment generated is sufficient to service the debt that's used to fund the improvements. We do use lines of credit to fund the TIF allocations, and so we have to be certain that we're creating enough increment to service that debt. Then after the advisory panel meets and considers all the different factors, we make a recommendation to the city manager about the amount of TIF funding that should be brought forward. The next step is that the TIF review committee meeting, I mean, the TIF review committee is convened, and they meet to review the proposal and the recommended allocation. This is required only for TIF Two, Three, and Eight. Again, TIF Two and Three are our most active districts, and that's the downtown TIF. TIF Eight is the newest TIF district that we have that was created for the Devon Headquarters Project. So the developer meets with the TIF review committee, explains their project, and the TIF review committee then makes a recommendation to city council. And that recommendation is brought forward to you, and you approve a budget allocation for the TIF projects. And that's done on a project-by-project basis in the downtown TIF district and TIF Number In Step Six, the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust approves an economic development agreement with the developer. And this spells out more specifically the requirements of the developer and what our expectations are about the project. Here's an overview of our existing TIF districts. Currently, we have eight TIF districts, beginning with the Medical Research Park TIF district. And the most recent one that was created was the one for the Devon Headquarters Project. TIF One, this is a map of the area. It's generally east of I-235 and encompasses the area that we're most familiar with as the Medical Research Park and the OU Health Sciences Center. Here are some of the examples of the projects that have been constructed through TIF Number One. The Presbyterian Research Foundation... The Presbyterian Research Foundation is an important partner in TIFF number one, and they have been the developer and manage the projects that were partially funded through TIFF district number one. TIFF district number one was created in 1993. It was extended for almost 1,500 days due to litigation. If you remember, we were involved in a series of suits that were filed over TIFF district number one and number two early on in the process. The Supreme Court ruled in the city's favor and authorized an extension of the timing of those TIFF districts for, like I said, just under 1,500 days. TIFF number one has a companion TIFF district, which is TIFF number seven, that was created in 2006 to just add an area to the south of TIFF district number one into the increment area. The current taxable market value for TIFF district number one is about $289 million, and the estimated annual taxes are about $2.5 million. This is TIFF district number two and number three. As I mentioned, the increment area is a smaller area. In this depiction, it's kind of in a gray. It's from 13th to Classen, 235 to I-40. I mean, then the project area encompasses the area with the red dashed line. TIFF district number three is the sales tax TIFF district that we created for the Skirvin Hotel. So it is the boundary of the hotel, the footprint of the hotel. And one of the biggest projects that has been done with TIFF number two is the Skirvin Hotel that received an allocation of about $14 million of ad valorem and sales tax TIFF. Here are some of the other projects. Our focus has been on residential in TIFF number two, and we funded a variety of residential Here's some of the details on TIFF two. It was created in March of 2000. Again, it was extended for about 560 days because of the litigation I mentioned earlier. The sales tax TIFF for the Skirvin was created in August of 2006. The current market value in the downtown TIFF is about $1.1 billion, and the taxes, the annual taxes, are about $5.2 million. In TIFF number two, we took a creative approach to help the taxing jurisdictions that are impacted by the creation of the TIFF district. And that, in TIFF number two and TIFF number three, we have direct and indirect projects. Projects that are direct projects are those where the city or the Urban Renewal Authority is actively involved in the redevelopment. They receive an allocation of TIFF, they're constructed on urban renewal land, something like that. The indirect projects are all the projects that just happen on their own. They don't receive any intervention from public entities. And in this scenario, instead of all of the increment going to the TIFF district, the increment for those indirect projects, 50% of that goes to the other taxing jurisdictions. So this was a way for us to help the other taxing jurisdictions benefit from the growth that we've seen downtown. The TIFF district receives 100% of the taxes from the direct projects and 50% from the indirect projects. Are there any questions about that? It's kind of a complicated...
Give me an example, direct and indirect projects.
Um, a, let me think. Okay, a direct project is a Skirvin Hotel, and an indirect project would be the investments that Sandridge Energy is making in its buildings. That's an indirect project. We've had no, they have not received any TIFF money. It's not an urban renewal project. All of the increase in value created by Sandridge will go on the indirect side of the ledger, and the other taxing jurisdictions will get half of the increment, and the TIFF district will get the other half. So any of those kinds of projects that have just happened, the investments that Roy Oliver and Mark Beffer are making in the City Place Building might be an example. No TIFF money in that project, not an urban renewal project, so that, again, will be an indirect project.
Actually, there are a lot more examples.
There's a lot more. I'm just trying to pick.
But there's a lot more examples of indirect projects downtown than there are direct projects. The Rick Dowell investments that have been made, it goes on and on.
[inaudible]
One of the things that we wanted to kind of talk about in this presentation was the average annual growth rate in values in TIFF district, in TIFF district number two compared to citywide. And we have seen a pretty phenomenal growth in values in TIFF number two. Overall, the growth in values has been 23%, and that's a five-year average annual growth rate. For the direct projects, it's been 29%. But remember, many of those start with zero value. They weren't on the rolls to begin with. And then for the indirect projects, the annual growth rate's been about 19%. And that compares to citywide over that same five-year period of about a 6% growth. So pretty phenomenal growth rate in downtown, and I think really shows the value of the public investments that have been made and the value of the TIFF program. TIFF two and three, the public investment that we've made has been about $29.3 million. The direct private investment has been $187 million. And the combination of both private and indirect, indirect, private investment has been about $337.5 million. So on the direct projects, we've had a return of about $6.39 for every dollar we've invested. And on the overall, the return has been about $11.50 on every dollar, so. Here are some of the projects that we've approved in TIFF number two. They include Block 42, which is an apartment complex, I mean, a condo project on Second Street. The TIFF allocation to this project was $990,000. It was used for public improvements. And the projected payback from the increment that that project is now generating is about seven years. The Legacy at Art Central is an apartment complex in one of our first downtown TIFF projects. The TIFF allocation to that project was $2.5 million, and it was used to fund the parking structure, to get the kind of density that we wanted for that project. And on this one, the current taxes are about $377,000 a year, and the projected payback is about 11 years. TIFF district four and five is the TIFF district that we created to make the public improvements necessary to attract Dell computers to Oklahoma City. It includes an ad valorem TIFF district, which is TIFF number four, and TIFF number five is the sales tax TIFF that's associated with the Dell site itself. Here's the campus. It was created in March of 2005. The Oklahoma River Sales Tax TIFF was also created as a part of that, as I mentioned. It is a project-driven TIFF. That means it was created to help with the development for Dell computers. Right now, the taxable market value in that TIFF district is about $71.5 million, and the annual taxes are $675,000. TIFF number six is a small residential project that we did within the project area of TIFF number two, but we created a separate increment district to capture the increment that was to be created by TIFF number six. It is called La Los Rosas Residential Development Project. This project, it was planned to build originally, I think it was about 130 single-family homes that we only got through phase one. This project faltered due to changes in the economy and difficulties with individuals getting mortgages, and is now being managed by Habitat for Humanity. And Habitat has been successful in building more houses in this area than getting those houses on the tax rolls. So we think that eventually the project will be successful, but as originally envisioned, it didn't quite hit the mark that we originally had thought.
And I think this highlights that there are risks associated with TIFFs as we go through. There's no slam dunks on any of the markets down there. And this looked like a good idea at the time. It's still a good idea. It certainly got caught up in the economy, really more from the ability for home purchasers in that area to get mortgages, more than anything else that's down there. And at the end of the day, we still think it's going to be successful, but it's going to take longer than we'd anticipated.
These were the first single-family, new single-family homes of any, you know, number built in this area. It's next to Wheeler School. We still think that it's a great residential project, and we hope that, you know, it continues to grow and be more successful.
Kathy, before you go any further, has Habitat been a part of trying to redevelop this project?
Yes, they have been. They purchased the remaining property from the original developer, and now they're developing it as a Habitat project.
So it still has some hope?
It still has hope, yep.
Okay, all right. Talking about Los Rosas?
Yes.
Yes, Los Rosas, yeah. So right now, the taxable market value in the area is $1.9 million, and the annual taxes are $17,000. So didn't quite hit the mark that we'd hoped, but it is improving. TIFF number seven, as I mentioned earlier, was an area that was added...
Kathy, come back to Los Rosas.
Sure.
The improvements for that, the money we put into it, were for public infrastructure improvements into that. So let's be clear, we actually helped put in the roads and water and the sewer down in that area. So those are public improvements that were put in there. So I just want to make sure that we covered that aspect. That's what those dollars were used for.
And there has been about $24 million in private investment that's been made. TIFF number seven, again, this is the area to the south of the Health Sciences Center TIFF district. It's complementary to TIFF number one and provides for the expansion of the area. Right now, it is not generating any increment, so there are no estimated annual taxes that are captured by this TIFF district at this time. And then TIFF number eight is the latest TIFF district that was created for the development of the Devon Headquarters. And as you know, it's being used to fund projects like the renovation of the Meridian Gardens, the streetscapes downtown. It was created in December of 2008. It is the primary funder for Project 180, which also receives funding from the Water Utility Trust and the General Obligation Bond Program. Right now, the taxable market value for the Devon TIFF is 17, almost $18 million, and it's generating about $237,000 a year in taxes right now. Obviously, once the tower's completed, that number will go up a great deal. So, but it's just good to know that it's already generating taxes from the parking garages and the other improvements that have already been made to that property. In conclusion, the purpose of TIFF is to eliminate blight and to encourage economic growth. It is one of the few tools that we have available for redevelopment and to help fund redevelopment of blighted areas. The process that we use, I think, shows that TIFF is very much a public process, and it's the public's money, and that we use an open and a judicious process to try to allocate funds to projects. As I said, our most active TIFF district is the downtown TIFF, and we continually hear from developers that are interested in doing things downtown. So I think it's a very valuable tool for Oklahoma City. And that talks about OCEDT. We can go over this, it's really just kind of an extra slide, but OCE, the Economic Development Trust, is the designated entity to administer and carry out the project plans for TIFF two, three, four, five, and six, and eight. And it is party to the redevelopment agreements with the developer. It is the recipient of the TIFF revenues from the Oklahoma County Treasurer and the sales taxes that are transferred from the general fund, and it issues the long-term debt that's associated with our TIFF districts and used to fund the project. So, you know, we do have debt that's associated with the Dell TIFF district, TIFF four and five, and with the downtown TIFF district.
Kathy, on TIFF number seven, could you give me, on the actual use of the TIFF for the Oklahoma Health Science, was that for infrastructure?
I don't believe they've had any projects that are specifically TIFF seven-related at this point in time. Most of the investment has been in the area of TIFF one, and TIFF seven was created as kind of a holding pattern, a complementary...
Anticipation.
Yeah, potential development site for the expansion of the Health Center. But I don't believe there's been any projects in the area as of yet. Any other questions or comments?
Kathy?
Sure.
The TIFF committee meetings are all subject to the Open Records and Open Meetings Act?
Yes, sir.
And all the documentation is also subject to open records?
Yes.
Okay. And should, going through the process, a project be recommended? The final approval of that project sits up here in the council?
Yes.
And so should, for some reason, it go through all that process, and I don't think this has happened, but the council thinks that it's not a good or proper or best use of TIFF funds, we could say no, and that would end it for that project?
Definitely.
And all votes before the council have not been unanimous in the past on TIFF projects?
I'm sorry?
All votes to council on TIFF projects in the past have not been unanimous.
Yeah. So the final authority rests here, just, thank you.
Kathy, and excuse me if I'm asking too basic of questions, but in general, you have a TIFF district, and you value all the real estate at the beginning of the TIFF. And then each year, as new developments come in there, you reassess or revalue that area, and as it continues to increase compared to its base value, that's considered the increment value. And the TIFF gets the income, or yes, the taxes associated with just the increment value?
Right, that's correct.
Okay. And perhaps not all the projects or uses of the taxes associated with the increment fund can be determined at the beginning of the TIFF, so over its 25 years' life, you know, money is accumulated for the TIFF, and new projects may be approved and, okay.
Yeah, and each of the project plans for the TIFF district includes a budget, and in that budget, we do try to identify the kinds of development that we are interested in promoting. Like, in downtown, it was commercial hotel residential development. So there are some kind of broad categories of projects that we are interested in helping, but we try not to get too specific in that budget preparation.
Could I ask a specific question, going back, say, to the TIFF for the Dell Center? Has the anticipated, both current funds and future funds, has that already been designated, or as money grows and develops, you may put in new projects?
Yeah, we could put in new projects, yes.
And if I recall, the Dell had proposed three buildings down there at some point in the future. They've only built two of those buildings, but the break-even proposition was based upon what they could do in one building. And so that one building's in place, and they're past that, they're into the second building, and, you know, they've had some ups and downs and deployments, but they are meeting and exceeding what we had anticipated in the agreements with Dell.
But, for example, the hotels that have been developed closer to Meridian on 15th Street, those are in the TIFF district and have added to the increment value in the area, and that was not anticipated at the time we created the district.
That's great. And you'd hope that additional private investment, you know, follows around the facility. Thank you.
Pete? In the analysis, it says sometimes there's a figure for a payback number, or what does that indicate? I'm not sure I understand.
We try to calculate the amount of time that it will take to pay back the TIFF allocation from the taxes generated.
So the TIFF money goes in first, is spent, and then this payback period, like 11 years or something like that, that's our best guess at the front side of when it will pay off?
Exactly. And something like La Rosa, we didn't make mark. That one's going to be longer than that. You ever dozen, and so those are estimates at that point in time.
But they'd be adjusted as we go forward, as you get hard data. You might change that from 11 years to 12 to 9 to...
The Hill's an example of that. I hate to break this news to everybody, but sometimes developers overpromise on what they can bring in to the equation. Sometimes they don't come in quite as fast as they hoped that would happen. And the Hill's an example of that. There's been some good progress over there. We still think that's going to pay off, but it isn't going to pay off as quickly as we thought at the beginning.
I have two questions.
Yeah, and, you know, when we make public improvements, like the Maywood Park area where we built streetscapes, you know, the entire, the entire public benefits from those improvements, not just the developer. So, and Project 180 is another great example of, you know, we're using the Tiff money to build public improvements, and in fact, that's the blind share.
Well, I think that's true as a general statement. It may not be true when you get down to specifics. If the project doesn't pay out, it wouldn't necessarily be true. As a general statement, Project 180, obviously, that's true, but La Rosas may not be, may not fit that category if it doesn't eventually pay out.
But those public improvements are there, and the public can benefit from them, but the project is not going to pay back as quickly as we thought.
My first question is, what happens when you meet that? Let's say, let's just say the one, I saw one in there that had 11-year payback, and it's got 20 years left to go or so. If it meets that at the end of 11 years, then does that mean that there's more money can be spent on other projects later?
Yes.
At what time do you make that determination as to when other money, or do we make that determination, when other monies can be spent?
We try to make periodic estimates of what we believe the increment revenues will be over the length of the remaining term of the Tiff District, so that we know how much money we have available to allocate to future projects.
So based on what's happening, it's possible that somebody could come back in and say, "We want to spend more money because this projects this pays out in 11 years, and we've got another nine left," and I'm just oversimplified, don't-
Yeah, I don't think we would let a developer that we'd already given a Tiff allocation to come back and ask for more just because they performed better than they thought. But overall, for the entire district, if one development's performing better, it can benefit others.
Some of them are so project-oriented, if they pay off early, I mean, like the Skirvin. Is that, that's pretty project-oriented, isn't it? I mean, it's just the Skirvin.
Well, but it's in Tiff Two, so if it performs better than what we expected, it benefits all of the, all of the projects that could be funded for Tiff Two.
Okay, but no more money would go into 180, for instance, if it pays off early?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Project 180, if it pays off early, no more money would go into it. It would be used to pay off, do something else with?
If the taxes generated by the Devon development are higher than we anticipated, it could create additional revenues that could be used for other projects in the project area for Tiff Eight, which is the Downtown Tiff District.
Okay, well, that's my point. That's what I was trying to say. Secondly, I wonder, you know, this started out, when I first came back to the council in 2005, it was, the voices of people that spoke against Tiffs were pretty much a solo. It was pretty much Representative Reynolds, and there wasn't many other people out there talking about it. It's a chorus now. I mean, I hear everybody from Leonard Sullivan to people on the Board of Education, especially the people on the VOTECs. Anytime I encounter those people, they're talking to me about Tiffs and that they're not as enamored with the idea as they might have been five or six years ago. Do we know what the process is for each one of these individual entities that has to sign off on this? Do we know whether it's an open process, and what would we do? Have we ever had one that said, "No," they were opposed to it? And what is the law with regard to if one of them does say that they're opposed to it?
Well, first of all, there's a representative from each of those taxing jurisdictions on the Tiff Review Committee, on every Tiff Review Committee. And they have never voted against a project plan, the creation of the Tiff District, or any project.
It's my understanding, though, that many of them are like, the mayor would just assume he was the guy. And then he'd decide, and that's how you get your information, that's how you get this approval. It's not done in a body like us, nine of us sitting around, and we get to vote. It's done by one individual, generally whomever's the chairman or whatever of that board, saying, "That's what I want to do." And it never comes to a vote at the school districts. By that, I mean public schools, and also career techs, and libraries, and I don't know, I'm getting outside of my knowledge when I say all of them are that way, but I know specifically at least one of those is that way.
Yeah, and there is no requirement for that kind of public vote in the Tiff statutes by those other taxing jurisdictions, and if they chose to do, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I'm not sure the city has a lot of control over how each of those taxing jurisdictions individually tries to make those decisions.
But what if one of them said, "No"? Does that impact us legally? Can we still do it anyway?
No, you can still do it anyway. The city council could still do it anyway.
That's just wind addressing, then, to go down there and talk to them about it.
No, you haven't treated it like wind addressing.
If that's what it is, if that's what it is, one of the things we need to do, if we're going to continue to do Tiffs, we're going to have to do a better job of that.
Well-
Because we're losing those people, I'm telling you. I talked to enough career tech people, public school people, we are losing those people. But I'm talking about individuals on the board. I'm not talking about their necessary elected leadership, but I'm talking about individual board members, and if we want Tiffs to continue to be a viable option, we're going to have to do a better job, somebody's going to have to do a better job of down there in the-
There was an example in '01, we were trying to put together a Tiff, it might have been 2000, for a corn facility, the one that I would find-
That wasn't a Tiff District.
That wasn't a Tiff District, I've been told.
No, it was a tax abatement district, and those require a public vote by each of the taxing jurisdictions. Let me, on Tiff Two and Tiff Eight, and there may be another one, we have in the budget, in the budget for each of those Tiff project plans, budget categories to allocate funds from the Tiff to projects for those other taxing jurisdictions. And one of the, and I think that's one of the ways that we demonstrate that this, we're not just giving this lip service, we're willing to take some of those incremental tax revenues and use them to fund projects on behalf of those other taxing jurisdictions. We've done a project for Metro Tech to redo the basement of the Montgomery into a training facility. They received a Tiff allocation to do that project. So Tiff Two has about $12.5 million for those kinds of public projects, and the Devon Tiff has $20 million. So, pretty significant dollar amounts that don't require them to impact their general obligation bonding capacity, they don't have to go to a vote of the people to get a specific project approved, they can come here and receive an allocation of Tiff funds to do a project. The downtown school has a Tiff allocation in Tiff Two that we're waiting on, so.
Is it possible for them to opt out? Their vote means nothing, then. I mean, legally, I'm not denigrating that, I'm just, I'm trying to be, legally, their vote is not significant, other than advice.
The vote that creates the Tiff District is the vote of the city council.
Is here. And we, in the past, every time I've asked, is the vote unanimous under, below it? And I've always been told it was. But in that, in continuing that discussion with members of some of those boards, what I've discovered is, they didn't know anything about it. And that's, but my point is that if there is money, if there is money in these, for them to do additional projects, most of them do not know that. They don't have any idea about that. And they're going to be, they're going to join the course that I think is out there against Tiffs, if we're not, and if we think it's a good idea, we've got some public relations work to do.
I think each Tiff that's generated needs to stand on its own merit, and we have to sell it, that it's either to each of those folks. I think if they said, "No," I think this council would take it into consideration.
But I think they, most of the people that I've dealt with, and it's not just one or two, it's more than that, have no idea what this is all about. All they know is, they don't get as much money as they would if we hadn't have done it, in their view, in their view. They don't get as much money as they would have received had we not had a Tiff District. And so, if it's going to continue to be a viable financing force for us on into the, forever, we need to do a better job of making sure the public relations is handled better than it has been in the past. Because I'm not talking about people that are just- But Pete, isn't the premise that those projects that are creating those additional dollars wouldn't have happened without the Tiff? They're still getting the same amount of tax dollars that they got the day before the Tiff was approved. And if you don't do the Tiff, then you don't do the projects, then you don't increase the taxes to create that.
You don't have to convince me, I voted for every one of them. What I'm telling you is, we're going to have a groundswell of people who don't see it the same way we do, that are going to be complaining about it if we don't do something about the public relations side of it. I agree with you completely. I wouldn't have ever voted for them if I'd have thought they didn't do exactly what you said. And I would think if I were a school board member, a VOTEC member, a library person, I'd think the same way. But I'm not sure they all understand it this way.
And going back to when we created Tiff District Number Two and decided to do the direct indirect allocation, that was another way to try to address the concerns of those other taxing jurisdictions.
I didn't know that, too.
And make sure they, you know, benefited from all the other investment.
David? If I may just say, because I served on the Library Commission going back into the 90s, and we were always apprised of this, and we always had a very good presentation, it came before the whole commission as a vote, I mean, and I'm not saying some of the people that you've spoken with perhaps were not informed properly, but certainly, some organizations are very well informed, and really, just as Gary said, you've got to look at it, I think, from a long-term perspective. Sometimes these projects don't get completed without bringing in the Tiff as a part of the overall project. And, gosh, look at the enhanced value that we're going to see with respect to the Devon building. I mean, that's just a perfect example. Everyone benefits out of that. So, anyway, I just wanted to say, Pete, there are some organizations that do be, that are impacted, and they're very well informed, and the members of that organization look at it very seriously, and they analyze it very carefully, but I can speak, at least as a former member of the Library Commission, you know, we were very supportive of the concept, and we see value going forward from that.
Well, I think Pete's comments weren't as critical of the maps, I mean, the Tiff process, other than the fact that we need to do a better job, and I'm not sure who "we" is, in educating the public to make exactly the points you made, David. You know, understand the benefits of participating in the Tiff program. And maybe it's nothing more than an educational program to have people like Kathy and the likes of us out in the neighborhoods explaining Tiff, so that people understand that when they vote for a Tiff project, they're voting in their best interest over the long haul.
Skip? You know, and I wanted to emphasize what the manager said a few minutes ago in reference to, how do we promote projects that we put money into as far as the infrastructure? And one example is the La Rosas, because, you know, I became very passionate about that project right after I got elected. That was the first news article I had as an interview to talk about the development of South Oklahoma City that was part of Ward Seven, and unfortunately, because of, you know, several, you know, negative consequences in reference to the developer and some economic, you know, changes as far as financing, you know, this project just kind of stands there. And, you know, with, of course, with the help of Habitat for Humanity. But my question is, do we have a duty or a role, or is it outside of our legal duty to try to promote some of these projects in a more proactive way after we've put this type of money in the infrastructure, and whatever may happen in reference to the downside of a developer not being able to go forth with the project?
I've always seen it as part of my responsibilities, even as staff, to help promote those areas and to find ways to make those projects work better if they're not working. So, if that's what you mean, you know, when it was, when La Rosas was beginning to have, we knew they were having trouble, the developer came to talk to us, we tried to help him, you know, just brainstorm ideas on what he could do to improve the financial performance of that project and help him find some solutions, some long-term solutions. So, you know, I think, we see that we have a responsibility to make this program as successful as it can be. And like I said, I meet with developers fairly regularly about projects in our Tiff Districts, and, you know, those kinds of projects help create other projects. It's the spin-off, like Councilman Greenwell mentioned, and like the city manager mentioned, that really help make Tiff Districts successful. So we, you know, we do try to talk it up and communicate about it and promote the creation of additional Tiff revenues.
So we could do a little bit more in reference to these projects that get, you know, a standstill, that we could have a contingency plan built in to try to move it forward to other developers, or encourage other developers to come in and participate with the program?
Yes, and, you know, to some extent, the city may be limited as a public entity in its role from what it can do, you know, to help a private developer, for example, but I think we can provide them with support and ideas and, you know, even contacts and stuff sometimes is what they need, so.
And my other question, then, Kathy, on the Tiff Seven, the increment district of District Two and District Eight, and I'm looking at the boundary lines of eastern over to western, southeast 27th, north to northwest 13th, and this is the Lincoln Health Science Center around Lincoln Boulevard. The lower JFK area development off of Seventh and MLK to the west, would that be considered part of this whole boundary, all the way up to 13th Street?
I think it is. Isn't it, yeah, it's in that geographic area.
So the development over there, as far as all the housing development is going on and the continuation of it, the increase in the valuation of property and the taxes, will that be split between, in reference to the, this district?
Split.
I mean, any of the funds from the increase in values and the taxes, do any of that go to support the Tiff District over there?
Yes, it does. And I'll try to get the, I think he's talking about one and seven, actually. Tiff District's one and seven, but I'll go back and get some information on that and let you know where we are on those projects.
Thank you. Okay. Yeah, Ed?
Kathy, can I just talk about residential development? Because it seems, there seems to be, just the philosophy, your philosophy and the committee's philosophy on residential development, and it seems to be, there's different projects with very different philosophies. As you know, we've talked about Oklahoma City's, there's been called into question Oklahoma City's walkability, the effect on urban form, on public health. We're widely criticized nationally. I went to this meeting in Madison, Jeff Speck and Andrew Dwyer, they're going out of their way to show slides of Oklahoma City, they're using Oklahoma City as an example of, you know, how urban form affects public health. And the slides they're showing look very much like, and I haven't been to La Rosas, I'm just seeing the four that you've shown me, but they're extraordinarily wide streets. And maybe I missed it, but there's no sidewalks, low connectivity, it's single-use development.
It has sidewalks, it has to have sidewalks, yeah. All our subdivisions are required to have sidewalks, so.
Okay, I'm just not seeing them in these pictures, but-
You can't probably see, well, and some of those photos may even be construction photos, so they may not have been built yet.
I see.
I don't know the timing of them, we have to go back and look, but-
The design of that would be very different than, say, Block 42 or the other ones where you have mixed-use zoning, you've got walkability, you've got high density. I mean, is there, is there philosophy in, especially if we start promoting different developments?
In the Downtown Tiff District, we have placed a priority and a criteria as a part of our evaluation on density and creating, you know, infill development that helps those walkability issues, you know, helps, you have to have a place to walk to and things to walk by when you're walking. La Rosas is a little bit different development in that it was in a neighborhood of single-family homes, and so we wanted to complement the surrounding neighborhood. Downtown, you know, we look for much more dense developments, you know, a lot of what we're seeing now are apartments, because that's what they can get financing for, but I think, yes, we put an emphasis, as the Tiff Review Committee and staff that looks at these, on, you know, encouraging developments that create a more walkable environment downtown.
We're also being more of the category of infill. We had a vacant area down there, you know, we're trying to get people more in the center area, but not the core area. In an area that we had some elementary schools, we put some money in, and actually, the elementary school across the street from it's doing very well. And it was an attempt to stop people from, you know, this is being on, we'd rather have them on southwest or southeast 29th Street than out at southwest 149th Street.
134th.
134th, excuse me. 134th, excuse me.
And it is, I mean, it is a walkable neighborhood, Las Rosas is, to the school that's next door and the park that's adjacent to it. I mean, it's not, you know, it isn't of the same style, though, that you would expect in downtown. In downtown, we expect a much denser kind of development, and we have, we have those kinds of criteria that we look at.
You would have probably liked Los, if you'd have seen it on the, it's right across the street from a school that a lot of money's been put into by MAFS for Kids, right across the street from a park, in a kind of a depressed area of all single-family houses, first redevelopment in that area.
Fifty years.
Since somebody drilled an oil well and stuck a dairy cup next to somebody's house in the 30s. And that's, I mean, it was, it was a, one of those projects that you, when I saw it, I had every hope that it worked. It just hasn't. The economy caught it at a bad time. But you would have had every hope. I mean, it's right across the street from a school, it has sidewalks, it's a nice new development in an area that hadn't seen that before. It was a really nice little park facility across the street. It just didn't work. But it was, it was, it would not have fit the category that you're thinking of, I don't think.
And downtown, you know, sometimes what we will do is we, like with the legacy project, we specifically allocate money to a parking structure so that we can get the density on the block that we want. So, you know, we do make those decisions about density and helping the developer fund the ability to create that kind of density.
You have to comment your questions from Kathy from the council?
One more on that. If you had transit, I think, if you had transit going to some of these downtown, you think you'd have less of a need for as big a parking structures?
That's probably true. And I think that's something that we'll probably be coming back and talking with you some more in the future about is, you know, our, this number of spaces per unit kind of allocation that some of our developers are making. So, there's, we're looking at all of those different issues.
Thank you. All right. Kathy, thanks.
Thank you.
Next up, Eric, before you come up and Mike, I got it. Yeah. The, before they come up, we're about to do a presentation on MAPS Three implementation schedule. I want you to focus on what was the second row there on the right, because there's some key people here that I want to really point out to you. In the center is our good chancellor from OCU, Tom McDaniel. And not only is he chairman of the advisory board, he is also chairman of the Convention Center Subcommittee. So, remember that for a minute. Because on, from looking at, on the left is Kimberly Lowe, and Kimberly is the vice-chairman of the advisory committee and also the chairman of the parks committee. And that's going to be critical, because those seem to be a couple of the projects that are moving, and they like each other, which is, yeah, which is kind of a neat deal. And then also, we have Mike Mize, who is with ADG, who's our program consultant, so he's a very important part of the MAPS Three process. And then Nicole Franklin is with him, he's associate with ADG. And then, of course, Eric Winger is our internal MAPS Three program manager. So, there's some real key people there. But I want you to focus on Tom and Kimberly, because not only are they key people on the advisory board, they chair the key committees that we're going to talk about a little bit today. Mike's going to come up and give a presentation, and as he's coming up, I want to point out, we've brought several presentations about MAPS Three to council before, and we've had various implementation schedules before council before. Haven't taken any action on them, we've just kind of laid them out there to take, to take a look at them. I know that he did two presentations at council, and we had one, it was a presentation when we had a joint workshop with the MAFS three advisory. We're coming back today for another presentation, not asking for any action by council today. We're laying that out for consideration. We're looking for some action potentially back on July 5th. But as we go forward on these, I think you need to remember that it's a zero-sum game on the schedule. And if something goes up, something else has to come back. And our attempt is to get all eight projects completed within a certain timeframe based upon the cash flow coming in. And we're trying to get a schedule that works, and it's, again, a zero-sum game. You move something up, you move something back. And so, we're trying to get something that's workable and meets everybody's needs. And we've just got some very different thoughts and desires and some strong personalities out there that are pushing different projects. And I think that's why we appointed those subcommittees, so we could have stakeholders and advocacy groups for each of those projects. And so, that's a good thing. And so, when the convention center is pushing to get their, convention center done quicker than later, that shouldn't be a surprise to us that that's happening. And I think, I know Tom has said that, you know, if, you know, we can go back and run this schedule back through all the subcommittees, and those projects that got pushed back are going to be unhappy, and those projects that got pushed up are going to be happy. And I think that's pretty predictable, because all those people, all those groups are advocates for their own projects that are out there. And so, with that, Mike Scott is going to share us a presentation on the implementation schedule.
Thank you, Jim. Mr. Mayor, council members, Manager Couch, always a pleasure to be here. I'd like to start by saying I think the fact that we're here and the presentation that we're going to give you today is evidence of the fact that the process works. Jim alluded to that a little bit in his earlier remarks. I think there's one other key person that needs to be pointed out. Councilman Mars is a member of the advisory board as well, has attended a number of the subcommittee meetings, so you need to know that council's been represented at many of those subcommittee meetings.
And Councilman McAtee fulfilled that role for the year previous to that, and did a, you know, his job.
That's right. You have been well represented. There are also members of the transit subcommittee here today as well. There's a lot of interest in this. We're delighted to have the opportunity to work with these different groups. We've attended all of the meetings ourselves. And what you're going to see today really is a culmination of a very collaborative effort among council, the advisory board, the subcommittees, consultants who've been engaged as part of the process. As Manager Couch indicated, we've made several presentations to you, to the advisory board, to the subcommittees. This is really a culmination of that, of those presentations. And what you're going to see today is a little bit of a recounting of some of the project orders that were presented at the joint workshop. But we also, at the very end, the last two that we're going to present are project orders that we took to the last Citizens Advisory Board Committee for their review and for their recommendation. I'll try to go through these first seven reasonably quickly, since these are project orders which you have had an opportunity to review before. The first is the original conceptual project order that we presented in March. Next is a revised project order, which was presented at the workshop. We followed each one of these project order slides with a brief explanation of the major components of each one of these presentations. The next slide, at the request of the Convention Center Subcommittee, we took, made an analysis of what would happen if we moved the Convention Center up in increments, and we moved it up in increments of one year. This is, would move the Convention Center up one year from the original project order and has really just a minor impact on the balance of the projects. We had two options, which moved the Convention Center up to 2014. Option one, moved the Convention Center up 21 months from the original project order, and, once again, didn't have significant impact on the overall projects. But we did move the last three wellness centers, and the some later phases of the trail were extended to later portions of the program order. The second option of 2014, beginning the Convention Center in 2014, moved the Convention Center up 24 months, but it split the Upper Park into two phases. The first phase would have gone early in the program, and the later phases would be completed later in the program order. Just because I know we'll get into this a little bit later, those basic amenities for the Upper Park in this very limited first phase really would have the goal of landing the Skydance Bridge and also providing some landscaping at the very northern edge of the Upper Park in anticipation of the Convention Center being immediately north of the Upper Park. The next two slides moved the Convention Center to 2013 and 2012. They have significant impact, come on, backwards. There it is. They have significant impact on the other projects. The entire Upper Park would be moved to the end of the program. A significant portion of the transit would be moved to the last half of the program. It did allow the moving of the fairgrounds up a year and would allow moving the Whitewater Project up six months. And the same is basically true of starting the Convention Center in 2012. The next two slides are the slides that show the project order that we presented to the last Citizens Advisory Board as a culmination of comments that we'd heard from all of the interested parties as part of the process. Project Order Option Number One moves the Convention Center up 30 months from the original project order. Phase four of the river, the lower park design and construction, and phase two of the transit would get moved back in the project order two years. The last three wellness centers and later phases of the trails are also extended. The Upper Park would again be divided into two phases, with the first basic phase that I mentioned earlier, and completion of the balance of the Upper Park later in the project. The fairgrounds again moves up a year, the Whitewater Project moves up six months. One of the benefits of moving the Whitewater Project up that six months is that it allows for a completion early in 2015, so that it would be able to participate in pre-Olympic events prior to the Brazil Olympics and the Rio Olympics in 2016. That was one of the goals, to move the Whitewater Project up. And then we added a, an investigation and standards phase as part of the transit project. This investigative and standards phase would accomplish a number of things, including the subsurface investigations and utility investigations would look at the environmental impact of the specific route that is preferred, would also look at the route to make sure that it is the optimal route, and to provide other data about how the transit, the modern streetcar would impact the area where the ultimate route is decided upon. Project Order Option Number Two is very similar, except it moves the Convention Center up 21 months instead of 30 months, and moves the park completion to 2014, as was provided in some of the earlier options. And those are really the only two significant changes between those two. Now, with all the slides we've shown and with all the presentations we've made, these last two recommendations frankly aren't all that different from some of the earlier presentations that we've made. We've tried to incorporate as many of the comments as we could and provided these last two options to the advisory board. And with that, I'm going to ask Tom McDaniel to come up and talk a little bit about the reaction of the advisory board to these last two recommendations that we made.
Mike, before you leave, may I ask one question?
Sure.
All your scheduling issues, are they a factor of cash flow or resource limitations?
They are a factor of a couple of things, Councilman. One, in every single instance, we've done a thorough analysis of, to make sure that there is adequate cash to complete a project before the project is started. And we've talked about that on, it's the pay-as-you-go philosophy of the city and MAPS Three.
But it's not pay-as-you-go, it's pay, it's deliver projects that are paid for at the end of the day. I think that's an important distinction.
All of the money for any individual project needs to be raised before that project can start, or any phase of a project. If it's the architecture and engineering phase, we, and that's a million dollars, that million dollars needs to be collected and in place before we can let a contract for that architecture and engineering phase. If it's 100, if it's $200 million for the Convention Center, every dime of the $200 million needs to be in place before we can let a contract for the construction of the Convention Center.
To use the term pay-as-you-go, it may be a little bit deceptive. It's not really pay-as-you-go. It's having the money before you start.
That's correct.
I think that's an important distinction.
Okay. It is, it is an important distinction, so. But we also do maintain, to the second part of your question, we do maintain some time contingency in these projects, in the project order as well. Because based on history of the city's history of the original MAPS program, MAPS for Kids, things don't always happen the way they're supposed to, so we've allowed some contingency in here. We've always said this is a 10-year program, and we've maintained that in all of these project orders.
Well, Mayor, members of the council, I'm delighted to be with you today. It is, Mike, I'd ask if I would perhaps share with you some thoughts, and they'll have to be general thoughts, because we bring you a recommendation about an option, and I'd just like to begin by underscoring what City Manager Couch has already said. I'd like to think the progress, this process is working the way you would have wanted it to and the way you envisioned it, because we have had a plethora of competing views. The subcommittees have all spoken very candidly with my colleague Eric Winger and my colleague behind me, Kimberly Lowe. She represents Ward Three on the Citizens Advisory Board, and as Jim has already mentioned, chairs the park Subcommittee. But we think we're doing what you ask us to do, and that is, we're giving it our very best effort, we're giving it our very best thought, we're listening to everybody that comes to those meetings, they're all open forums, and we're trying to hear everyone's view. But ultimately, we're bringing you a recommendation, which is what we think you ask us to do. So, here we are today to say to you why we are bringing forward Option One. It is the one that moves the Convention Center forward and moves the park and the transit back slightly, and let me just, let me just share with you, kind of in more, in broader terms, what we were thinking. We've had the benefit, and I think you have too, of hearing experts talk about economic impact, and there are a fair number of people on the various subcommittees who believe that taking into account the economic impact of the MAPS Three project is a good thing. There are also a good number of people who think that paying very close attention to lifestyle and wellness issues is a really good thing, and that we, and if there are projects that would benefit from more study, more investigation, or additional time to look at the impact of other things going on around them, then that's a good thing for us to do as well. So, the option that we have brought forward does, I think, provides a pretty balanced opportunity for you to consider that does all of those things. The projects that have the highest economic impact by every measure that we were presented would be Convention Center, State Fair, and the Whitewater Venue. Those three things, we were told, would have the highest economic impact. The option before you moves all of those forward. And just to make, just to get to the point that Jim made earlier about, yes, it is true that I do chair the Subcommittee for the Convention Center. It is also true that what we bring you is not what the Convention Center voted to recommend to the advisory board. They picked the option for an additional 36 months, but we were told by Mike and the consultants in our meeting that that, going that far, would have an adverse impact on some of the other projects. And so, we did not do what the Convention Center Subcommittee recommended we do at the advisory board. And I use that just as an example of how I think what we're bringing you is something that is. that is balanced and takes into account a lot of those features. So we believe that what we have brought you does those things. So advanced economic impact programs have a minimal impact on the lifestyle, and I'll pick out just one of those, the senior wellness centers. We, I think, as a committee, understand the need to move forward with that, and we are moving forward, that committee is moving forward, to find a community partner and to start the first one. But since we've never done this before, and since there are no, there is no such animal in our city now, we're thinking that there might be lessons to be learned by doing one, and that, and so doing them sequentially makes some sense rather than doing them all, all four or five at the same time. So doing one, seeing the lessons learned, and doing them sequentially seems to make some sense. And so it's not just to delay doing it, it's doing it because it makes sense. And if we study more about, add these two items to modern transit, if we learn more about it and gain more information that will help us in the long run, then we're not delaying it because to do something else better, we're doing it because it makes sense to do it. And so I would just, I would just suggest to you that while we may not have picked the one that each of you individually would want, and you may disagree with us, and we all respect you as the decision-makers, we think we're trying to do our job, and we're trying to do something that will move us forward at a pace that you all will be satisfied with. And with that, I guess I'd conclude, unless Eric or Kimberly think I should have said something else, Mike? Well, with that, I'd be glad to stand for questions, but I'd sure rather you'd ask the paid help, but...
Can we go back, can we go back to the slide? Mike, can we go back to the slide and show, I'm sorry?
Before we get to the comments, what's the timeframe that you suspect to be bringing this? Let me start over. What's the timeframe that you suspect to be bringing this to council and wanting our feedback and eventually a vote to either approve one of these plans or approve something else?
Potentially July 5th.
Okay, so that gives us, what, three weeks?
Three weeks.
Okay. I want council just thinking about that timeframe, and I don't necessarily know that we need a full round of conversation today. We can do that, but we don't necessarily have to go through all that today. However, it's a great time to be asking questions and to be gathering information. Pat?
Could you go back to the slide and show this, where I can read, actually read it? You showed, yeah, yeah, thank you very much. I have the big letters. I'm sorry, my eyes are beginning to fail me, as well as other things. The Trails part, it is deferred. How much of time are we losing in developing the Trails by going to this system?
We're not losing a significant amount of time, but we've, we've...
Significant is one of those subjective words. About how many months, Mike, do you think it'll be?
Cole, can you? I mean, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't read this any better than you.
Glad to hear that, Mike. You're so much younger than I am, that is...
For the record, that's why we gave large-scale documents of this to the council.
I must have gotten a large-scale document.
Let's get rid of the color codes, because they're blind.
I think it's about one and a half years for the second and third, and nine months for the first one.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
I say it again, I'm sorry, Ed, I didn't hear you comment.
Well, there's three phases of Trails. The first one, I think, would be pushed back nine months, and Phase Two and Three would be pushed back one and a half years.
Okay, so 18 months for the, to finish up the Trails project beyond what we originally thought.
And frankly, Councilman, one of the reasons for that is that one portion of the Trails is going to involve a significant amount of investigation, land acquisition, and engineering because it crosses significant major streets within the city, and we've identified that as being the last of the Trails pieces to go.
Part of the Trails would that be?
That's the part that actually follows the Hefner Parkway, and it parallels the Hefner Parkway, crosses a number of major streets, involves a lot of private land, and will be a significant engineering effort. Pete?
With all due respect, Tom, we knew when we set the priorities what the economic impact was. We didn't set them in a vacuum. We knew that Trails, for instance, was something we wanted to do to show, to move the thing forward. We knew that the Wellness Centers was something we needed to do to show activity all across the city. So the idea that, it appears to me that the goal was to move the Convention Center forward, and all this is just reasons to do that. And that, I'm troubled by that, to be honest with you. I didn't hear, I didn't hear anything about what we talked about originally, about when the nine of us talked about priorities before the, before the, immediately after the vote passed. We talked about doing things that were significant for the city. We felt like this MAPS had to reach beyond the downtown view of MAPS, and we needed to put Wellness Centers in various areas of the city. We were told before that this would complete the Trail System. Now, it only completes them to the extent we allocated $10 million for, because that doesn't complete them. But we weren't told that the Trail System would be put off, and I don't think putting off one day of the part that we can be done, that can be done immediately, makes sense to me, not based on the commitments I made when I was, when I supported MAPS. I thought we were going to look for ways to make this much more a community project as opposed to continuing to make it a downtown project. And I represent people that really, that really believe that very strongly, that it ought to be a community project and that a Convention Center is not a community project for them. They just don't see that. Frankly, I don't see it either, but that's, but, but I voted for the project because all the other things in it I thought would satisfy the community ideas of it. But to move, but to take a format that says, we're going to shove the Convention Center as far forward as we can at the expense of everything else that has to be done, to me, is just not the way to do it. And I, and I think that we, what we ought to do is look at each one of the projects. Now, to some extent, you did that. I appreciate your comments about some of them. Some of the projects, we, there are reasons perhaps that they should be moved back, but it seems to me the cart's before the horse. We always set the project based on what we thought the priorities to the public were. If we, what we ought to do is say, okay, with sidewalks, just starting at the bottom, with sidewalks, there really isn't any reason to change that because they're going to go when they go, and so you move up, trails, is there any reason to change that? Well, maybe a reason to change Phase Two of it, based on what you said, but there's not even, there's no reason to change Phase One of it, that nothing's happened to cause us not to be able to build what we've already had plans for. You go to the Wellness Centers, you've given me some indication of why Wellness Centers, maybe some of them need to be moved back, and I can agree with that. But I think what that says is, let's accelerate the first one, let's move it to the absolute front, let's, because if you're going to string it all out in order to comply with what I thought the priorities we established were, we need to figure out those questions about who the partner's going to be, how we're going to run them, all, those are all valid, how many of them we're going to build, those are all valid comments. But we ought to be saying we're going to accelerate that, we ought to push it very much to the front. Fairgrounds, that, I think most people would, don't consider the fairgrounds in the same category they do some of the other things. And so if the fairgrounds gets moved up as a benefit by some of these other things, I don't think most of my constituents are going to have a problem with that. The river kind of fits the same category. Transit, I think, was the, Transit was the leader in what caused this to be passed. So if we're going to move it back, and some of the reasons you give us, I think, are valid reasons to move it back, what's in the front ought to be moved up. It ought to be, we ought to accelerate that. The park, things have changed with the park, I think. And so if it has to be moved back, then other things can benefit from it. I think it's a philosophical way of looking at it, to me, and I, I don't like, you know, was it, did the sidewalks, did the Trails Committee meet and did you, and say, we want to be first? And did you show a format of shoving everything to the back to make Trails first? No, you didn't do that. You don't have to answer that, because I know that's not what you did. I just, I, it's just, I'm, I'm, I do think the process is working. It's not working as I envisioned it to work. I envisioned it to work the way we set the priorities, and those priorities have not changed. Now, some of the, as I said, some of the factors that make them work may have changed, but that's the way we ought to be looking at it, as opposed to, well, this is going to generate X number of jobs for, X number of minimum wage jobs, so we're going to shove it to the front. That's not, that wasn't the philosophy that we used when we passed MAPS Three, that wasn't the philosophy when we set the priorities, and I think we ought to remember what our priorities were when we did that.
And Mike, what was the rationale in moving the Fairgrounds project up, Mike?
There was cash available to do it. I mean, that was really one of the single biggest factors in moving the Fairgrounds.
Well, there was cash available to do a lot of other things because the cash wasn't collected for a specific project.
That's, that's correct, but to speak directly to some of Councilman White's points, that with the Wellness Centers, for example, we could move that forward, I mean, there's, the fact of moving the Convention Center up doesn't, is not the reason that we moved the Wellness Center, the first Wellness Center back, or the reason that we extended the Wellness Centers over the life of the project. The reason we moved that up is because we've tried to take a very conservative approach in terms of what it's going to take to identify what is a senior Wellness Center. We're still working on that. We've got a consultant who's working with us right now to try and help develop that concept. We need to know more about the demographics of the city and where the first Wellness Center can go. Once we've done that, there will be an opportunity for citizens in that specific area to identify what specific needs there are for a Wellness Center. Then that Wellness Center will need to be, the building itself will need to be designed. The fact of the matter is, if those processes occur more quickly and we can get to those answers quicker than, than we have anticipated on these schedules, there's no reason that the Wellness Centers, the Trails, and some of those other projects can't be moved forward. I understand, Councilman White, your concern about, about having those projects moved forward. We understand that as well. We would like to see them moved forward. From a financial standpoint, there's no reason that they can't be moved forward, but we've tried to take a conservative approach with respect to identifying how these things are going to function and how they're best going to serve the community. If we can get to those answers sooner, we can move those things forward. We've tried to be conservative. I'd rather be in a position where we've said, we want the first Wellness Center construction to start on X date and have it start sooner than miss that date because we didn't anticipate what it was going to take to make sure that this Wellness Center, which will serve the community for another 50 years, has been done absolutely in the correct way. Same is true of Transit. We've got a 50- to 100-year investment. We want to make sure that that investment best serves the community over that long period of time.
Isn't that consistent with all of the projects, Mike?
I'm sorry?
Isn't that same question applicable to all the projects?
Well, it is to a certain degree, Councilman, but when you look at the Exposition Center, for example, at the Fairgrounds, that's a fairly simple project. There's an awful lot of study that's already been done with respect to what type of building it needs to be, where it needs to be, what purposes it's going to serve. So with respect to something like the Fairgrounds building, we don't need, we don't feel we need as much time to do study and to look at what needs to happen. We think that that's been done. With respect to sidewalks, the single biggest issue with respect to sidewalks is going to be determining where those sidewalks, in fact, go. With respect to the Trails, we will get those started as quickly as we can, and we have talked with city staff about hiring consultants for a number of those projects as soon as this program order has been approved by council so that we can set a final budget for each one of these projects and get those projects started.
You know, Mike?
I, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I, I'm going to forget what Pete asked me if I don't get the answer.
Okay. Tom, go ahead. Tom, go ahead and respond to Councilman White.
My memory isn't as good as most of you, so, but I wanted to just make this point.
We, with all due respect to you and to the council, we know how to take orders. I've been married 52 years. I know how to take orders, and if you guys send us a directive, well, sure, we'll follow it. What we think we've been told to do is to meet with these 60-some-odd people that represent every ward here, and we think we're getting the view from your ward because every ward is represented on the Citizens Advisory Board and is represented on every committee, and we've listened to what they have said, and all of them have had a point of view about it, and I was very sincere when I said there have been competing views. Now, we absolutely understand, we work for you guys. If you want to send us a directive, send it, but there haven't been any received. I mean, what we think you have told us is, study all this information, listen to all these people, look at the projects, bring us back a recommendation about a plan, and if, and if you all disagree with what we're recommending, our heart's pure. You're the decision-makers, you do what you want to do. You will not offend us, so do, we absolutely understand that you've got the authority to do that. And if you want to, if you want to send us a directive that says, do this Thursday, we'll get started. But we're, we're going through the process the way the lawyers are telling us to do it, and we're trying to get back to you with our best judgment. It may not be the best judgment, but collectively, 60 of us have looked at this for a year now, and this is kind of what we're telling you, we think, to move forward. If you want us to do it differently, well, just tell us, that's okay. And my colleague, Kim, particularly wanted to respond to your question. She is the Chair of the Park Committee, as you've already heard, and all of the plans, even though they moved the park back some, they all meet the criteria that we think you guys have said you would like for us to think about, is having something started and going on the park by the time the Boulevard is completed, and all of these plans do that. And one of the plans breaks it into two parts, and one of them breaks it into three. But Kim represents that, and she's got a, she's got a comment to respond to your question, Councilman.
Mayor, manager, city council members, it is both an honor to serve on the MAPS Three Advisory Committee and be able to speak to you very briefly this morning. Councilman, during the campaign, as a citizen, I remember three promises being made outside the scope of the project. One was that it would spur economic development to our city, a growing city that depended on solid development in a responsible manner. I heard that it would improve the quality of life, which, as a citizen, that is one of the greatest amenities I look for in where I live. And the third aspect was that it would create jobs within Oklahoma City. And of all the 60 people that you do have on the committees and all of the committee meetings that you have had, not only as monthly meetings, but as town hall meetings outside of that, you have asked the citizens of Oklahoma City to speak through those committees and through our advisory board to you. So what we are saying, we're not making superficial statements. If you've attended any of these committee meetings, the representatives that are on those advisory committees are deep thinkers from many aspects and many different walks of society. We, as an advisory board, have looked through many timetables in a very compressed amount of time. When we took our vote, it was not unanimous, but the one thing that we all did agree, as Councilman Mars pointed out, is that this schedule may be on paper, but it's not cost and concrete, and it's quite fluid. As one part moves, another part will move, but until this timetable is adopted, nothing moves forward, except debate over the timetable itself. So what you see here as revised Option One is what the advisory board did vote to promote to you, the council, for your approval in July. You'll have a great deal of time to think about it. I encourage each of you to attend the subcommittee meetings that will happen between now and that, in that timeframe, and listen to what your subcommittee members that belong to your wards are saying. your wards are saying and the people that they're getting input from, what they're hearing. We take our charge quite responsibly. Things that you see here affected, moved, are not necessarily because we had to take money for moving a convention center 30 months forward. They're the things that we believe move MAPS III in the direction of the promises that the citizens were asked to vote on. We talk about moving the fairgrounds forward. We talk about moving the convention center foreground, forward. Many citizens may never attend a convention down at the convention center, yet we're intelligent enough to realize the sales tax revenue that conventioneers and their family members bring to the city help MAPS programs, whether it be MAPS III or future MAPS programs, and they're good for the city. However, on the state fairgrounds, lots of us go to events there. Avera, the heart, is probably the largest event there, and I can't wait to get to go there when it's in one building and not four, and trudging through water, mud, and trying to carry an umbrella and have a great time at an event. The same thing with the river. I mean, that's an area where I can now go to the beach in Oklahoma City and take my children canoeing as a family. It's a destination place. The park. The park is probably, in my opinion, one of the most difficult projects to close your eyes and imagine because we get to create it from scratch. We all know what a convention center looked like, we know what a wellness center could look like, but the park is something that's a huge definition to put together. We also are starting to get responses from private enterprise that want to develop in and around downtown in the park. And all of our subcommittees are starting to realize that that is a wonderful way to augment the $777 million that we will get to spend on MAPS overall. So maybe we're being a little bit prudent in pulling back and saying, okay, let's look at splitting the park. What if we work on focusing to begin with to establish the amenities that will surround the boulevard so that when the boulevard is open, that part of the park goes with it so that it makes sense? But if there's private enterprise that wants to develop around it and help us to promote what we do as a park, then maybe we should look at that phase a little bit less. So again today, I, I'm, I'm not coming here to promote that everyone be in favor of option one, but to understand that we believe it's a fluid schedule, it's in a reasonable schedule to begin with, and that there was a lot of thought, integrity, and responsibility put into it.
I, I don't want this to come off like an argument between you and I, but, but I will say, but in, having said that, I will say this, that all the things you talked about were economic development things. You didn't talk about the other things that we took into consideration when we made this. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm casting myself as the anti-economic development guy. I'm not, and that's not me. I'm saying there has to be a balance. You name all the things that you're talking about that are economic development. That committee has decided that that is what drives this wagon. When you listed them, that's the first thing you talked about and the last thing you talked about. The middle thing you talked about was the quality of life stuff, the wellness, the stuff that reaches out into the community. We, the nine of us, not the same nine, but the nine that were here at the time, talked about a balance between both those things. And I, it's just my personal opinion that this is not balanced, that it doesn't move in that direction. It moves toward satisfying the downtown economic development view of things and not the broader community-wide quality of life things. That's it. I'm not saying it's not a quality of life thing to have a river thing, but it's not the same thing as having, having a wellness center in your neighborhood. It's not the same thing as having trails that cover the whole city. It's not the same thing as putting a transit system in that'll serve more than just a few folks. That's my point. And that's the point that I thought we had agreed on almost a year ago. And that's, and the park is the same thing. It's, it's a, while it's a downtown thing, it is a quality of life thing. I do understand why it might be pushed back a little bit because I don't think any of us had any idea what was going to be done with the, with the myriad gardens. We can all, some of us may think they did, or may, they, maybe they believe they did, I don't know what you, but I didn't. I didn't have any idea that the change that was going to be brought to downtown Oklahoma City by what's happened in the myriad gardens was going to be as impactful as it has been. And because of that, I think that in and of itself may put us in a position where we ought to consider moving the park back a little bit because with developing two parks of that magnitude virtually side by side is going to be very, I, I agree with you completely, very hard decisions would have to be made. But I don't want to lose sight of the things that were, in my opinion, the reason that you got your convention center. That's why, that's how you got it. You got it by promising people wellness centers, trails, that stuff. You didn't get it by promising a convention center. I tell you, no, no, and I know I've heard of somebody say they saw one, but I never saw a poll that had the convention center at more than 50% ever through the whole process, and I saw lots of them, never saw one. So those things were brought along by the quality of life things, and to push them back because they don't generate as many bucks and create as many minimum wage jobs as a convention center does, then to me, I think that's a mistake, and I think that's wrong to do that to the citizens that voted for it.
Pete, we got a lot of people that want to talk. I, I need to go on. Kimberly, do you want to respond to anything you said before we get back to the council?
The only thing I would say, Councilman, as I speak of those in the order, is that's the way they were presented in the campaign, and that's just the way I memorize them.
Okay.
So I, I see them as three inseparable entities. They're like gears that work together. If we pull one away, the other two won't work.
Ed, I, I just want to echo some of what Pete's saying. I think that the fact that we didn't consult other subcommittees is an indictment of the process. And, and for me, with all due respect, it's very problematic. I think that we would have learned, for example, the public health consequences. We, in turn, everybody wants economic development and jobs, but Oklahoma City has a 4.5% unemployment rate. We lead the nation, other than Washington DC, with all its federal jobs in terms of unemployment. What we lead the nation in also is a public health crisis, well delineated by the mayor at his roundtable. So if we had consulted the other subcommittees, I think, and, and consulted public health officials, we have an excellent opportunity to make a real impact in the short term because if, if things continue as they are, at the end of this 10-year timeline, we're going to have other public health epidemics that are completely unsustainable, and we could have an impact by concern. I think the transit subcommittee would, if they had have been consulted and, and been able to offer a timeline, would show you ways that it would help the convention center. The convention center is not going to have, you can't tear down the Cox Convention Center and build a hotel there until you have the new convention center built. How are you going to get people from their hotels to the convention center? When I go to a convention center, the last thing I want to do is drive or wait in line for a taxi. I want to use transit and get me to the convention. So there, there are things that, that, that should be considered, ways that transit would actually help the convention center. I want to echo what Pete said in that clearly across age, gender, political party, race, income, all demographics, the convention center was wildly unpopular, as low as 27% in the Gazette and News 9 poll. It did, I think there's a fear that if it gets pushed to the end and we go over budget and that thing is, has to face the people again in a referendum on additional money to, to get it completed, that it could be in trouble, and maybe that's driving some of this. But the, the, the argument that's put forth of why we should ignore what the public wanted is this economic development, but with all due respect, I, I don't, I don't think that data is there. I think it's an incredible statement to say that the largest economic development would be the state fair, the river, and the convention center. What, what are we basing that on? The city never did a need study on a convention center. We have a study by the convention sports and leisure committee in March of 2009 commissioned by the chamber that's never been released to the public. Nobody's ever seen it in its entirety. That convention sports and leisure study company has been widely discredited in a Boston Globe article that, that very nicely shows how in city after city after city after city, those economic development numbers are not panning out. And keep in mind that the popularity of the convention center is only at 27% because we kept from the people that we're going to have to come up with an additional $50 million for a hotel. That, that wasn't discussed before the MAPS III vote. So with that knowledge, maybe convention center popularity goes into the single digits. But the fact is, we do have to come up with $50 million for a hotel, and that hasn't been figured out. So we want to have an investigation and standards phase for transit, but we don't want to have a similar phase for the convention center, which has what Kathy O'Connell called one of our most difficult obstacles to overcome in terms of implementation. So I, I, I think that in the workshop, I asked about the economic, economic development of transit, and, and it was, the answer was that that's indirect, and so it shouldn't be considered. That, that's wildly unfair. That's, you don't do, if you look at Portland and Seattle and Dallas and the economic development that has occurred through transit, if you're trying to develop downtown housing, you have transit, and then look at what happens at each transit stop. You can't ignore that because it's indirect economic development. That, those numbers have to be considered. And if those numbers are considered, transit goes to the front in terms of economic development, especially when you don't have the data, I think, to support the economic development of the convention center. That's a, maybe a 1990s model, but the number of square footage that's come online in terms of convention centers in the last few years is massive, and the convention center business is decreasing. So you have more square footage competing for less business. And the convention sports and leisure study anticipates a bigger convention center than we're building with this. We're going from 100,000 square feet to 200,000 square feet. So when we argue about the economic development of a convention center, are we talking about going from 100,000 to 200,000 square feet? Is, is that going to generate the kind of numbers that have been talked about? Can we even do this for 250 million? We're talking about going underground in questions of water tables. Can you build something underground with all the exhibit halls underground for 250 million dollars? Does anybody have any idea whether, whether that can come in a budget of 250 million dollars? So there's plenty of questions that go around in terms of that viability, and I just, I would ask that, again, that public health be strongly considered. I think there's another issue, which, which I brought up in the last couple of weeks, about comps and land. This, this has us starting to buy land this year for the convention center and the park. And we've talked about comps and how there might be a question of comps, maybe they're artificially elevated. I think that needs to be looked at. There's land right across the street at Hudson Reno, where the, the public is about to buy a large amount of land for a convention center, and there's a question about the comps of land right across the street. How is that going to be? I think we need time to look at that before we start buying land in MAPS. Thank you.
Skip?
Well, first of all, I would like to thank the president and the chairman of this project and past president of the university for such a fine presentation. And it was two key, key word that you mentioned that I, I take a great priority in, and that is what makes sense. And, and I know that, you know, the balance of this, you know, we promised the voters that we would not spend any money until we collected money for these projects. And at the same time, you know, I think all of us understand the economics that's involved. It's not, it's not a one-dimensional economic project. It is an overall economics because the economics first is that you got to collect the money before you can spend to do anything. And then you hope that some of these projects, because of that, just like the TIF project is what's going to be the return in the long-range, range future after we construct the projects. But my concern on, on that is, is that, as several of us have, have emphasized, we went out and sold this, and probably one of the greatest contentious issues in reference to a project for the city of Oklahoma City of, of voters, the first time we ever had employees come against this city in reference to an organized body to go against a project that was being promoted by the city. And we, as council people, went out to these various communities and put ourselves out front to say the reason why we support this and the reason why we want you to vote yes for it in the face of those individuals who was out campaigning the same night, in the same place, the same day, saying vote no for it for various reasons. I think we have to be honorable to the voters when they say that I'll vote for it if this is there. We knew the polls. Several of them kept coming back, and it continues to say that there were certain projects that the community would support wholeheartedly. And if some of these projects were set out there all by themselves and put out as a one-initiative vote, it would lose. So we did the tweaking. We came back and put together the list, and the list that sold to the people was those quality of life projects. And I just think that some of these quality of life projects, we're going to wash them to death, to the point there's no fiber left for them to even to hang up anyplace. And when you get disinterested, when you get the citizens disinterested in reference to those projects, it's going to be difficult for us to go back and ask them again. So matters less what the consultants say, matters less what the engineers say. At the end of the day, it's going to be this council that still have to answer to the every last one of those citizens that voted on these projects, and we have some honor, I think, that we should continue to deliver to those citizens. And I'm just fighting for some of these quality of life projects. I don't have any problem with the convention center moving up, but I do have a problem when you push some of the quality of life projects continued back. Some of these projects is not going to cost as much money as, as the convention center, true enough. But I think that there's a balance that you can say, you know, that makes good sense, that when you bring the wellness center farther to the forefront, even if you, you match it timely, time-wise with the convention center, I think that still gives the citizens some, some feeling of, of a promise delivered. The trails, you know, and he's no, I mean, former councilman was so adamant about this issue, Sam, with the trails. Several of us promised Sam, this will never get hidden and lost. This is a quality of life that every citizen in this city has a need for and can appreciate. It was just last week, a person come down here because of a sidewalk issue in reference to the handicap disability. But these are the things that people see, they feel, and they touch every day. You know, we just passed this issue this morning about, you know, dedicating money for resurfacing it on the communities, cracks in ceiling. It's only because these are the things that people see and they feel and they touch every day that they get up and they know that their tax dollar is being used for a service that they need. And so to, to all of you, I know you're doing a great job. It's a difficult task, just as much as it is for us at the end of the day to, to cast that vote and say which one is going to be first, second, and third. But I just hope that you go forward after this discussion and realize that we owe a duty, and I think we owe a great amount of respect to pay that duty to those citizens and realize that we did timely as much as we could to bring some of these forth, some of these projects forth for a real quality touching that the individuals can see on a life basis. And I'm, I'm, I'm going to stop here, but the wellness center, don't wash it to death. We got some of the finest hospitals in this city. We got some of the finest rehab specialists in this city. We got some of the finest experts in reference to fitness in this city. We got some of the finest YMCA's in the, in the, in the, in the United States right here. It don't take a rocket scientist to figure out, how do you put together, you know, one of these programs in at least in one quadrant of this city? The demographics is clearly stated from the last census report. We got the numbers from the county and city health department. It clearly tells you where the zip codes are, where the most negative impact in reference to all medical issues is for is diabetes, high blood pressure, and every other major disease or health problem that exists in our community. That, those are clearly defined. And so it shouldn't take very much to say, well, here's the density, here's the greatest need, here's, I mean, and partners and people have come forth and said they want to be a part of this. Metro Tech has said they wanted to be a part of it. OU has said they wanted to be a part of it. So you got people knocking at the door. I just think that, you know, pushing it to continue to study and I just think that, you know, pushing it to continue to study and study and study and study, it just, you know, creates more lost time in reference to something people can actually see and feel for the dollars and for the taxes that they have committed to say, I'll support the city of Oklahoma City if y'all will do this for us. And so we said we will do this for them if they will support it. And, and I just think that this is where we need to be a little bit more with the balance. Because at the end of the day, when I go to a church and when I go to a social setting, when I go to a neighborhood meeting, the first question somebody's going to say, that don't make sense. Thank you.
David, then Gary.
Well, this is the kind of reaction we get just on a early presentation. I think we may have to order out lunch and dinner when we get to vote on this. President McDaniel and Kimberly, I thought while some members of the council heard a focus on economic development, I heard a focus on the process. And I really do appreciate your involvement, your leadership, as well as every participant in this program. And, and I'm not able to spend the amount of time that each one of you have been able to spend. In our profession, we constantly have to rely on professionals for information, advice, recommendations. And I certainly want to continue that with this process. So thank you. The members of the various committees from Ward Five that I've been able to speak with just talk about how much they enjoyed the process, how they know their voice is being heard, how they share information from their neighbors. So I think we need to focus on the processes that has taken place. And again, I want to commend everyone's involvement. And so granted, the term economic development came out during the discussions, but again, the thing I took away from these presentations was the, the process that took place. And I do believe everyone is being heard and various issues are being addressed. And again, thank you. I've got complete confidence in everybody involved in this process. Thank you.
Gary, then Larry.
Well, let me say first, having sit in on these subcommittee meetings and, and hearing what went on there, I, I fully support the subcommittees and the advisory committee's recommendation. I think it has been well vetted in all those committees. And as typical for a committee as well as the horseshoe, you don't get everybody to agree on everything. But I think it has been well thought out. I don't want the citizens watching this or hearing anything in the next few weeks to think that there's any of these projects that we're not going to do and that we're not going to do to the quality that we said we were going to do. What I heard was a discussion on what economic development those various things brought, but I did not hear, and I believe I, I had, I heard Mike say the exact opposite, that the decisions on moving some of these others back was not cash driven. It had to do with understanding and getting the full information that the other people on the horseshoe are demanding that we do before we do these projects. That's what's driving some of these going back. The wellness center, if you look at the option one that they're putting in front of us, the first wellness center has the partner development starting right now. And I can assure you from sitting on that committee, and I, I'll ask Tom if he agrees, we're not ready to tell a partner what we're going to do in a senior center so that we can get a partner to develop in there with us. Is that a fair assessment?
That's a fair assessment. We have a number of people attending the meetings that are interested, but no one is prepared to make a commitment, but we're, we're, we're trying to get there.
So, and I believe, and I think the committee has discussed, you want to get the first one done, you want to see how the partnership goes, you want to see what amenities are in it before you can determine, you want to, so that you want to say that's what we want to keep duplicating. It wouldn't do any good to build all five of them to some model right up front and find out the model doesn't work somewhere. But you're going to have to start getting, the partner development and the scope of the wellness centers is like the chicken and the egg. The partners are saying, we'll, we'll buy in when you tell us what's going to be in there. And we're saying, what's going to be in there? What has to be in there for you to be a partner in it? And so I'm not sure that this is, even the schedule that you've got here seem to be pretty optimistic on the wellness centers. The sidewalks are there, the, the, we do, still do not have a list of where the sidewalks are going. But yet they've got pre-construction starting on the sidewalks right now. So that's optimistic to think that that's going to happen. The trails, we don't have all that many contractors, I've been told, that are interested in doing a whole bunch of trails. So if you push all of those up and you think you're going to blast all the trails all out there at once, you're, the interest is not going to be there from the, from the contractors. The transit, the councilman, Shadid made a point to talk about economic, what a transit will drive in economic development on where you put it is the very reason that we need to make sure we fully vetted where that transit line is going to go. Because if you put it in the wrong place, you're not going to get the desired results out of it. So I don't think moving some of that transit back for a, a vetting of it is hurting it at all. On the park, the upper park, I recall that the quarter shore committee in the final study said that the quarter shore park development around it wouldn't happen, wouldn't be fully completed out and you wouldn't see all those nice renderings for 20 plus years. Moving part of the park back a year or 18 months doesn't seem to be a big deal to me if you can capture the other things that the advisory committee put into this option one. So I, I just don't want the citizens out there listening to think that there's anything in the maps that we preached about and talked about and campaigned about that's not going to get done, number one, that will not get done in a, in a close to timeframe as you probably would be amazed is going to happen anyway. I made the comment at the last advisory committee, in all my years in, in public service, I've never known one to come in on time and come in on budget, seems like. So I think it's fairly optimistic on some of them anyway. So it, it's, I, I just, I think everybody has this, this great concern that Maps Three is going to end up not being what we said it's going to be, and that is not true. It's just not true. And I don't think that the timelines that you're arguing over here are not that critical. And the very reasons that I heard that the, some of the things such as the park and the wellness centers and transit, the reason they were moved back, I didn't hear was because they needed to capture the catch to do the convention center. It was for doing all the things that you say you want them to do anyway. And that's trying to get a full understanding and make sure that we do them right. Because the worst thing we can do in Maps Three is do them poorly. We haven't done a Maps project yet that we didn't do quality wise, and the citizens have appreciated that. And the last thing we want to do is, is jump out there in some aspect of a timetable situation and do something poorly. And I think that, that option one starts the ball rolling. And as I told Tom in the advisory committee, whatever this council does by a resolution when we finally pass a timetable, we can undo by a resolution too. And we have done that in the past. So if something comes up that says, woo, we shouldn't have done that, all we got to do is put it on and do a resolution and change it. And we have done that. So I, I appreciate too, and I, and I thought your comments were very well spoken and, and I see that. I see that on the subcommittees, I see the people having a passion about it and understanding. And I do believe, I don't want to start another argument on the polling and what was popular and wasn't, what wasn't popular, but I think there are a number of people out there that think the convention center is important when they understand what it drives in Oklahoma City. And, and that, there's a lot of things go on in those convention centers that are local. There's a whole bunch of, of things that happen in them that are local. So there is an interest in it locally, not just driven by that. So, and in the aspect of, we'll talk about this more, I'm sure, I'll leave it at that.
Larry, Meg, and then Pat.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to be real brief. I had an opportunity Sunday night to be on Gwen Faulkner Lipper's show. And she asked a question about Maps Three, and I'll give you my response very succinctly. And that is that Maps Three includes eight projects. The eight projects were voted on by 54% of the citizens. And I believe it's my duty to see that these eight projects get done and get delivered to them in the timeframe that we're talking about. And we've always talked about roughly a 10-year timeframe, that these projects all get done and will perform in the quality and the way that, that they were, they were advanced. And that being said, looking at this, we all have our hot buttons. I had the privilege, as Gary's had the privilege, of serving on the oversight committee. So we have had the opportunity to sit in on some of the subcommittee meetings. And there are some difficulties, there are some challenges in each of these areas that have been, I believe, vetted into this initial time schedule we have here in the area of the three areas that the council, I believe, or at least I thought the council, had his top priorities. And our top priorities were to show some progress on sidewalks, on trails, and on the wellness centers. And when I look at the schedule here, I see that the first wellness center is underway in effect right now with a completion date of roughly 2014. And despite what other people may know, from listening to the discussion in the wellness center subcommittee, nobody can sit down today and tell us exactly all the activities, all the services, all the nuances that are going to a wellness center. That's what the subcommittee, I thought, correct me if I'm wrong, is involved in right now, trying to get that information together and say, this is what a wellness center should do. And we want those wellness centers to be tailored to the needs of the demographics of the different areas of the city. We're talking about roughly building four wellness centers, very simplistically, that'd be one in each quadrant. We don't know which center is going to be first because we don't know which partner is going to come through first. So there are some questions that have to be answered. If we get Wellness Center One done in this period of time here, I can stand, I, I think the rest of us can stand in front of our constituents and say, we have given the top priority to the wellness centers. The sidewalks there, the work will start, that's not going to be rocket, the sidewalks are to go to public facilities like schools. Those sidewalks will go in, we have $10 million to spend, that's roughly $1,250,000 per ward. And those sidewalks are scheduled in our option one to be completed again by, I read here, what, 20, the beginning of 20, somewhere in 2014. And there's work that has to be done. It's just not as simple, you've got to get right of ways, you've got to get, what, not right of ways, permission to the people to go across the easements. Easements, easements done, okay? You've got to have ADA compliance in these sidewalks. So it's, it's just not a simple thing. If someone, a contractor out with a bucket of cement and say, put in a sidewalk, they're going to get done first. And the area of the trails, I happen to be with Sam Bowman, who's no longer with us, on the Trails Advisory Committee. The commitment was never made to finish the Trails Master Plan, never made. It was to move in that direction. So the amount of trails that were going to go in, the money was to be spent implementing the rest, as much of the Trails Master Plan as could be. One of the key components of the Trails Master Plan has always been a trail from Lake Hefner down to the current river, down roughly the highway way. Now, I don't know anything about building trails, but I know that is a massive undertaking. And what I heard you say is option three of this puts that particular project at the end of the three phases on the trails. And that's there not because we're doing anything else in the city, but on its own, you couldn't get it done any faster than that. There are two other options, and one of the other options, I believe, is connecting South Meridian down where, where the boats currently stop, all the way up to Lake Overholt or around the river. Is that, is that, okay? That is a complicated option also, but is so critical. Those two difficult trail components are so critical to the overall master plan that it's going to take some time. And when you look at this, the whole trails is going to be done in, in a phased way here. So our, our commitment to trails seems to be there. So I just encourage the, the council to digest this and see if in reality, the schedules, priorities that we said were so important are not inherently there. And remember that the folks that came up with this schedule, quite frankly, I hate to admit this, know even more about scheduling and construction than I do, and maybe they've got some good logic on why they did it. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thanks, Larry. Meg?
I'm going to also try to be very brief in coming this late in the process. I don't think I have an original thought that I can share, but I do want to try to echo some of these comments. And very simplistically, I think this amazing process began a long time ago, and it began with our discussion about what Maps Three was going to look like. We had an open process, we selected projects. There are eight of them, and we've committed to complete those eight projects within essentially a 10-year timeframe. Maps One looks very different today than it looked during the same planning process. And our library changed location, I think, three times. Our canal changed location. Things changed out at the programs. Manager, you can help me with?
Ballpark changed locations, the arena changed locations, yeah.
But we did decide to get started, and we decided on an implementation schedule. And I think in this point in time, if you look at this colored schedule, which none of us can read, we're all too old, I think, to be able to see this carefully, but there is a start point of 2011 for every single project. It's something. It's discussion, it's pre-contract, it's working on partners, it's, but something is going to begin on every one of these projects as soon as we possibly can get out of the box. So I would encourage us as well to just take a look at, or to trust the folks that we've entrusted to go through this process. There are 60 people that have committed a ton of time to help guide us. And we do have the ability to be flexible. I'm looking at my transit friends here who have been very flexible in this. And they have moved back in option number one, but I think they appreciate the fact that they've moved back. And I think they'll take advantage of that to address issues like technology and routing and the environment, things that will ultimately improve the transit component that we've put together. So I just would conclude by saying I, I am very supportive of all of the work that's been done. I think we need to get out of the box and get started and, and understand that we're going to have to make changes and adjustments down the road. Thank you, Mayor.
Pat?
Your Honor, I won't try to be brief, I will be brief. When the projects were first passed, I asked scheduling. And the mayor pointed out that we would have an advisory committee who would have the responsibility for developing schedules. And I think you all have done an outstanding job. You got to be proud of yourself because you dealt with some, some very difficult problems, I think, very effectively. And the only caveat I would like to throw out, being the pessimist that I am, is that if you take the beginning projects and there is some degree of difference in when they will begin, and, and start those projects only when you've accumulated all the money for those projects, and build, or commit that money to that project based on these initial budget numbers, you need to be careful that at the end of the day, the last projects built have enough money to finish them. Because we did run into that project, that process, a little bit at Maps One, we had to extend it some. We ran into that problem a little bit at the arena renovation. We had to do some value engineering, which is a nice word to mean we had to cut some things out. But we were able to deliver a product that met the needs of the people, and I think that's the important thing. So the, the idea that all these projects are well defined and we know exactly what they're going to look like today is a misconception. It'll be a work in progress, as May pointed out, there'll be a lot of changes made responsive to changes in, to the world we live in. And I think that's important, I think it's a good idea. Thank you very much for your hard work, you guys have done a great job.
All right. Any other comments or questions from council?
All right, Tom, Kimberly, thank you very much for your, your efforts in all this. We really appreciate the advisory board and all the hard work that's gone into this. And obviously, we're going to take it into consideration as we continue the debate in the coming weeks. And Mike, we appreciate you and your staff and, and all, all the work that you put into the process too, and the consensus building that's gone into it. And I'd be remiss if I didn't bring up Eric's name. Eric, thanks for your diligence. And if anybody's waiting for us to make a decision, it's Eric. Because he's got, he's got a lot of work to do and he can't do a whole lot until we tell him where to start. And we need to be mindful of that. We are going to be delaying these projects if we don't come up with a decision and a consensus and allow these people to get to work. So with that, I'll pass it on to you guys and, and we'll be continuing the conversation.
Thank you very much. We, I want you to know we're listening, we're paying attention to what you're telling us, and we appreciate the, the opportunity to be with you. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Tom. Thanks, Kimberly. Well, when City Manager reports.
I think we have some citizens have you heard on MAPS 3?
Jeff Bezdek?
My name is Jeff Bezdek. I served on the MAPS Transit Subcommittee, the Alternatives Analysis Committee, and Regional Transit Dialogue. I just submitted one flyer, the receptionist wasn't out front, for Ms. Debbie Blackburn, who also signed up as well. Regarding the option 1, I actually went to the MAPS Oversight Board and spoke in favor of the option 1 proposal, namely because we thought, several of us thought that that would be an ideal compromise in getting everything moved up front and moving forward. There are some things that have happened in the recent environment with the Alternatives Analysis, and that's the committee that's pursuing federal funds to supplement the streetcar process, in which we actually have selected a preferred alignment for the streetcar. And I guess one of the issues in the option 1 schedule is this new phase called Investigations and Standards. Now, you have to understand that the MAPS Subcommittee for the Transit Project did not have a chance, was not presented, the alternate schedules. And we have not been able to provide any feedback as of yet as to what this Investigations and Standards phase is, what's involved, what the benefits might be. We also don't have direct answers yet from Rick Kane, or I think, you know, he may be waiting on the FTA on what the federal funding requirements might be, when we would need the money if, to maintain our eligibility throughout the entire process. So we have some concerns, and the primary reason why I'm here is I certainly would like to ask the council's flexibility to, you know, receive comments back through ADG and Eric's office on modifying our schedule further. Quite frankly, the people that have come up with the routes so far prefer ADG's original schedule that was presented at the very beginning of this process, in which there were no politics involved. That was ADG's best guess on what they thought the project's schedule might be. And since that time, I think you've seen all these various schedules, a very confusing array of schedules, come out as a result of politics. Now, granted, everyone wants their project first, and I'm no exception with our transit project. But we're the only project that can save money through the Project 180 that is under construction right now. And we're the only project that is in all probability eligible for federal supplemental funds to stretch the MAPS 3 tax dollar further. And a lot of these political arguments were centered around economic development. And as has been noted by several council members, transit in other cities, being Seattle, Tacoma, Portland, have had an astounding resulting return on every public dollar spent and private reinvestment along the line. I actually have brought with me, and will give to you on the way out, the actual return. And we're talking about billions of dollars in each of these cities. Now, at the joint MAPS Oversight Board meeting between the council, Oversight Board, and the consultants, the economic consultant for ADG actually may note of this, said that they had not factored, because they did not have enough information, on the economic development of the streetcar. So if economic development is going to predicate schedules, we think that it should be weighed fairly. They predicated the schedule recommendations based on direct economic return. Economic return derived from actual jobs created in the construction process and a revenue generated by the facility. They did not factor in economic development along the lines that has been seen in these other cities, which subsequently creates jobs and businesses along the way. Now, I'll try to wrap up quickly, but, you know, we had, I had a debate with Councilman White some time ago, in which he wanted to see the MAPS streetcar do more. And we worked very hard to try to accomplish his desires and some of the other council's desires, to make that system stretch out, be able to be extended outside of downtown into the community. And we also started meeting twice a month to try to meet the Project 180 schedule. I'm very suspicious of this standards phase, particularly since we have had an Alternatives Analysis, the federal process that's ongoing. The consultants have come back and confirmed, essentially ratified, the streetcar route has been come out with the Subcommittee. Now, that doesn't mean that there aren't issues along the route, there are things that we need to figure out, there are different engineering challenges that the Subcommittee will have to take under advisement. But, you know, the idea that we're not ready to go, and we don't have a professional backing the route mathematically through scoring of highest ridership, economic impact, expandability, ease of expandability into other areas, and operational efficiency, all those scores have come back, and they have ratified the MAPS Subcommittee's streetcar route. And what I fear is that this year worth of investigations standards is going to open up this thing for further debate and politics, and quite frankly, I'd like to move forward with it. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Debbie Blackburn?
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Good afternoon.
I don't want to repeat anybody, but I made some notes, started making notes when I heard some of the council people talking. Councilman Greenwell said that this was a very democratic process, and I think it was, all the MAPS processes have been set up to try to be as open as possible so we can continue to get this sales tax money. I would disagree a little bit about the democracy involved in this particular process because not all 60 members, and I might say at the very beginning, I love Tom McDaniel as much as Kim does, I've worked with him on a lot of projects. But this was basically done by one committee, the Convention Committee, who we heard in one of our meetings was a group of independent thinkers. They seemed to be heavily weighted. And it was their desire, their single desire, to have ADG go back to the board and come up with another plan that came up with the plan you saw today. The original plan that ADG did, and Councilman Mars, I would address this to you because you said, somebody said, and I don't remember which councilman, they know more about scheduling than we do. Well, their original plan was not this. Their original plan did not have an investigation stage for transit. Now, no one on transit is arguing that there doesn't need to be engineering done, but I can tell you that that route has been vetted by engineers. It is not, Councilman Mars, the fact that there has been no professional input into this process, particularly from the transit side. I was not at the meeting, at the advisory meeting, where the decision was made to go with this new iteration. And I can tell you that a lot of the people that spoke for it were under the impression that the option number one was the original option number one that put transit closer to the front. There's a lot of confusion about why there is a need for that long a period of time to do the engineering studies and investigations when, as was pointed out, I believe, by Councilman Shatted, it's, there hasn't been the same kind of work done on the convention center. Frankly, if you want conventions to come to Oklahoma City, you have to have a reason for them to come here. There has to be development downtown, something that attracts them, some way to get around as the transit would allow them to get around. So these reasonings for why the convention center, which was, and everyone knows, the lowest level, but something that the chamber wants, on the popularity, doesn't make sense. Have we looked, and I would ask the council to do this, at the impact this is going to have on the federal dollars, which transit is the only project that can leverage those? Do we know what impact that's going to be? I can tell you, and I don't want to be, I want council, this council, to be able to continue to get sales tax money. I've helped this city through an initiative petition drive, get sales tax money for this city permanently. So I want that to be available to the city. But I ask you, when you make decisions like this that give a certain group an inordinate amount of power in a process, you do not give the citizenry confidence that this will, the next election will be conducted properly. Also, on economic development, there are a lot of things that go into this. I know Councilman White talks about quality of life. It wasn't that long ago when I moved to Oklahoma City after I first got married that I sat in a meeting, and I heard a Chamber of Commerce official state that quality of life had nothing to do with economic development. And I practically knocked the table over getting out of the room. I couldn't believe it. I thought, we will never go anywhere if the Chamber of Commerce has the idea. Now, that person is no longer there. But if the quality of life is not equally as important as economic development, if we don't see that, then we have lost a great deal. We will not, we will not flourish. As far as the economic development of transit goes, I cannot think of a single project on this list that would generate more economic development. Yet, ADG's consultant, and it wasn't ADG, it's who they hired, who I was told would give, be able to, a qualitative estimate of what the economic development would be, just said there wasn't anything really that they could say about transit. That's just ridiculous. I know that you have all received emails from the head of OnTrak telling you what the economic development has been in other cities, and it is phenomenal. It is far more than a convention center could be. Also, as I think I said, because I've just jotted these down, I didn't really even intend to speak today, on the advisory committee meeting where this last iteration was recommended, a lot of the people that spoke up for it were confused because they thought that it was the original ADG recommendation. There is a fear, and I will tell you, I've heard people saying it, that this particular thing will put the last phase of the transit to the very back. And as one of the council people pointed out, and I think it was you, Councilman Ryan, in previous efforts like this, there have been times when the money has fallen short. And the fear has been expressed that we get the federal money, we get our five miles, we told the people we were going to build, then there will be no more. There will be no expansion of the system into a real system, which has been Councilman White's fear. I would just reiterate one thing. Somebody said it's doing it right rather than quickly. That's absolutely the truth. But transit for sure has been vetted by people, by engineers. There still has to be engineering like you do on anything. But to say that the convention center has been vetted and the other projects haven't so they can move forward faster is not accurate. ADG came up with an original plan, and their original plan, and they do know scheduling, as one of you said, was not this plan. As Jeff Bezdek said, it is political. And people watch this, and they watch whether the process is truly democratic. And this is not, this is not going to make them comfortable or confident that the least popular of all the programs rises to farther to the front, and everything else is subverted. I would just ask you to consider those things because I think we're talking about long-term and people's confidence in the process. And this, the 60 committee members, were not a part of this process, I can assure you I was one of those, and that does not really incite a lot of confidence. And I have the utmost respect for Tom McDaniel. As I said, we worked on projects together before. He's a good man with a kind heart and a big heart, but this doesn't have anything to do with that. This has to do with, is it a democratic process? Are we putting what's? ADG's had a first schedule, and it wasn't this one. And they went back to the drawing board, not because they wanted to, but because they are paid consultants and they were told to, and they came up with something else. Besides, there are intermediary timelines, which were not shown here today, which moved the convention center up just 24 months, or just 28 months, or a lesser amount. So there are things in between that. And I would just ask you that if you decide to go forward with this, which I hope you will not, that you look at the impact on federal funding. Has anybody asked COPPA how that's going to affect this? That you look at the economic development of transit, because you're going to find it's bigger than any of these other projects. And that you recognize that some of those people that spoke for this at that Oversight Committee were confused and thought that they were voting on ADG, the scheduling people's original recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Anyone else signed up from the public to speak on this particular part of the agenda?
Okay.
Mayor, could I ask one question of Mike, please?
Of course, you can.
I'm going to put you back on the spot here, Mike, real quick.
Look at that back.
The same thing keeps coming up over and over, and I'm, it really, in your original, the very first schedule that you put out, pre-construction and A&E on transit starts right now. Are you ready to start on A&E and pre-construction on the transit system right now?
We don't believe so.
Okay. In your option 1 that the Advisory Board has put out, pre-construction and A&E starts in the summer of 2012, next year.
Correct.
Construction in the original schedule, the very first schedule you put out, construction started in the summer of 2013. And the one that the Advisory Board sent forward, construction starts in the spring of 2014.
Correct.
Nine months.
Correct.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Any other comments or questions before we move on the agenda? All right. Anything else in the City Manager reports you want to draw attention to?
There's the May sales tax check, which was very good. Subsequent to that, we've gotten the June sales tax check, which was strong also. And there is a report on the commuter rail alternative analysis that's being worked on. It's not the downtown, it's the commuter rail that we're working with ACOG on.
I have a question on that. Have we agreed to participate on the study in the amounts showing on this little table?
Have we agreed to do that? Well, it's a final council decision to agree to that. I've tentatively agreed to the proportion of the split thereof.
So we're spending $160,000 to figure out a better way to get people out of Oklahoma City so they can spend their tax money elsewhere?
That would be.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I just.
Yeah. That would be one way to look at it.
I think commuter transportation is wonderful, but I do think that people who benefit from it ought to pay for it. And citizens of Oklahoma City are not going to benefit from it to the extent that we're going to spend that revenue someplace else.
And again, that's probably not a conversation, a conversation we're going to come up with answers this morning. That's, you know, we have, we've had regional transit dialogues along those lines, and there are other models that have been successful in other cities.
All right. We do have some citizens that have signed up to speak. We really appreciate your patience. Ronnie Kirk? Ronnie, thanks for sticking around. We will need your name and address for the record.
Thank you, sir. My name is Ronnie Kirk. I'm from 2328 North Missouri. First of all, it's an honor to be in front of the City Council today. First of all, it's an honor to be in front of the City Council today. I come down to let you know with all the negative, with all the negative reaction on news that's coming from the east side, we do have some good news that comes from the east side. Number one, I've been in business for 40 years in the same location. Number two, Oklahoma celebrated one of the oldest residents' birthdays this week, a Ms. Norman Kirk. She's 106 years old. This year, for the kids on northeast side of town, we gave them two East Day accounts so we can make sure most of the kids had a good time. We had one at 2328 North Missouri, and the other East Day account, we had Douglas Park, and the kids all came down and had a great time. I've been hosting, Juneteenth also this week, I'm hosting Juneteenth for the kids, some of the kids on northeast side of town. I've been hosting Juneteenth for the last 20 years in the same location. I feed the kids for two days, then play all the games they want, give them some nice prizes for the parents to participate and dance and have fun with their kids. That's all I can say, there is some great news that comes from the east side.
We appreciate you, all your support, Ronnie.
Thank you, sir. Y'all have a good day.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much for sticking it out with us today. Kelly, you want to pull that microphone down and give us your name and address for the record?
Good afternoon. My name is Kelly Smith. My address is 4616 Eastman Drive in Oklahoma City. My home is located near the intersection of Northwest 63rd Street and North Meridian Avenue, and that intersection is the reason for my coming here today, and my daughter, Christy Smith, who's 16, came along. We've lived in our current home for over 14 years, and we have been a one-car family for more years than that. So Christy and I have an unusual opportunity to travel through the intersection of Northwest 63rd and Meridian, sometimes in a motor vehicle, and almost just as often on foot. We are concerned about the deteriorating safety situation for pedestrians at that intersection. For the pedestrians that don't break an ankle getting to the intersection, since there is no sidewalk, there are two really serious problems that are encountered there. One is that the, in a low to moderate traffic situation, there is not sufficient time for a pedestrian to clear the intersection because the signals were designed for cars, and only for cars. So a pedestrian might cross the street halfway, or perhaps three-quarters of the way, and then find themselves stranded there with cars ready to start moving. In heavy traffic situations, of course, that doesn't happen. Nonetheless, it's, it's, it is dangerous. We have encountered this situation ourselves, sometimes in extreme low-traffic situations, such as the morning of May 29th, when we were walking to church. The evening of April 27th, around 7:00 PM, we were walking, this was a Wednesday evening, we were walking to choir practice, our church, and once again found ourselves stranded about three-quarters of the way across the street. Second, the more, maybe another very dangerous situation, is drivers are increasingly making right-hand turns without signaling and making illegal turns. When crossing with the traffic, a pedestrian must linger at the corner to be certain that a car does not turn right with no signal, because you never know. And that only exacerbates the problem of not enough time for the pedestrian to get across the street. Probably what might have been the last straw for our family prompted me to come here was the evening, the late afternoon of June 2nd, when my daughter, Christy, left her home to catch the bus at the southeast corner, the covered stop for the number eight bus, at the southeast corner of the intersection. She did wait at the southwest corner of the intersection for two cars to turn with no signal in order to begin crossing the street. After she had crossed the right-hand southbound lane of Meridian, she then had to jump out of the way of a car that turned illegally into the left-hand southbound lane of Meridian, an eastbound car from 63rd Street. And this came, along with this, there was a driver, the driver yelled at her, and there were accompanying hand gestures. We've had several other near-miss experiences, but I won't, you've heard enough. And it isn't just our family. This is a densely populated area. I've contacted the Oklahoma City Police Department, talked with personnel at Hefner Briefing Station, and the Traffic Enforcement Division. A lieutenant assured me that the police would take measures to remedy the law enforcement situation, and indeed, on the afternoon of June 10th, we did see two solo motorcycle officers in the intersection. We had made a bus trip, and that is the first time in 14 years we've ever seen the traffic officers at the intersection, so I feel good about that. The intersection has never had pedestrian signal equipment. The intersection does have significant foot traffic. The intersection is a time point for the number eight bus route, a heavily used bus route. There are convenience stores located at both the northwest and the southeast corner of the intersection. There are several apartment complexes in the surrounding neighborhood, among them the Pheasant Run Apartments, Lakeview Apartments, Meridian Ridge, and Chevy Chase Apartments, many families with children. So you can imagine, these convenience stores, especially now in the summertime, are frequent destinations for teens and older grade school kids who go there to purchase snacks and There also is a Sonic Drive-In that has relocated in the last two or three years, and when that Drive-In relocated, they encourage walk-up traffic. They have outdoor tables, chairs, and ordering equipment. So whether it's just the high cost of fuel, for whatever reason, there are many people who want to cross 63rd Street and grab a burger. Air quality in Oklahoma City is deteriorating. I have an article here from USA Today, I think many of you have probably seen this, in a American College of Sports Medicine surveyed 50 cities, Oklahoma City was number 50 in health outcomes. We need to encourage walking, we need to make it possible for people to walk. So the people living near the intersection of Northwest 63rd and North Meridian Avenue need pedestrian signaling equipment. That concludes my comments. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you both for coming down. Joshua, you want the final word today? Can you keep your comments brief, please? Thanks.
I'll keep them brief. I just wanted to mention that a lot of the walk signs in the city just don't seem to work. That's a big problem as far as the safety. As far as the Convention Centers, well, I was also just going to cite again that report by the University of Massachusetts, the effects of military and domestic spending priorities, that it does actually sort which sectors get the most job creation, just multiple, just how many jobs and how much total pay in jobs per $1 billion in government spending. And it came out as education first and then transit, but that's, that's an example where it actually looks at different sectors and how they're influenced by government spending. I had more, but I think that's the main thing.
Thanks for coming down today.
At our intersections, the walk signs are sort of like somebody yelling "pull" in a ski range.
You could say jog. Or jerk.